Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 24, 2025. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431-02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the Commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the Commission may vote to go into executive session, which would not be open to the public, and that would be for legal advice and discussion with the Commission's attorney on any items listed on this agenda. And that's pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We can go into roll call.
Chair O'Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Mayer.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an open call to the public. At this time, any member of the public may address the Commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the Commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the Commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the Commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there currently any public comment at this time for something that's not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing no one get up or raise their hand, we will move on to Item 4, Action Items, and A, Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from September 10, 2025?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Marr has moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Lukey. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We're on to Item B, Approval of the Report of the Citizens Review Session for the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan 2045.
Chair, this is a report associated with your August 27 minutes. That meeting, you know, had several other agenda items on them, so we would like you to approve the report attached to this item that would then be your communication to council as to what was the discussion at the Citizen Review Session, which is a requirement of Title 11. So this is just a repackaging of your April 27 minutes and recording so that council can have a complete history of what the Citizen Review Session comments included.
Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I move to approve the report of the Citizen Review Session. Thank you for providing that.
Second.
So it was moved by Commissioner Norton and seconded by Commissioner Sharp to approve the report of the Citizens Review Session from August 27, 2025. All those in favor say aye. Oh, wait, is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And then we'll move into the public hearing. So I'll defer to staff.
Thank you, Chair O'Mandino. My name is Sarah Decter. I'm the Conferences and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. This is the second of two public hearings held at the Planning and Zoning Commission for a comprehensive update to the general plan. Staff is not repeating our very thorough presentation of legal requirements and how they have been met from the first hearing. We would just like to maybe lay out for you and for the public the plan for tonight, which is that the staff recommends the Commission begin by collecting whatever public comment is still in the room that wants to, for people who want to come forward. I believe you have some speaker cards of people who would like to have their time to speak with you. And then staff will be happy to start pulling up the Holding Space Excel file, which you got as up-to-date as it could be copy from last Friday, but we have been continuing to receive written comments, and we've continued to populate that so it's ready for your review. So I think we would want to add anything that you want on the ready-to-discuss side or take anything off that you think after thinking about it for a couple weeks you'd rather skip, and then get started moving through that for conditions of approval. If we do not, as a Commission and staff, if we don't finish the work tonight of identifying all the conditions of approval, the last thing we will do is schedule, is ask you to open your calendars so that we can schedule a special meeting next week and allow the city council to hold their meeting on time. So that is where we are, and that's, any questions for staff before we hand it back to you and you can begin public comment?
Thank you. So I'll first call on, I believe it says Tom Jensen? I can't read the last name. Pearson, okay, thank you. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
So he should have been a doctor with the handwriting. My name is Tom Pearson. I live at 833 Mead Lane here in Flagstaff. And as a member of the Regional Planning Committee, I would like to share some of my observations about this multi-year planning process. Although the committee was comprised of outstanding individuals, its composition was not representative of the Flagstaff community at large. Environmental groups dominated the committee. Other groups, such as local businesses, healthcare workers, and the construction trades, were significantly underrepresented. As a result, environmental issues dominated discussions and decisions. For example, when the Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff Future was absent, her colleagues presented her written agenda at the meetings to ensure their issues were addressed. Votes taken invariably went in favor of their position. The imbalance in representation stifled decisions to improve the Flagstaff economy. This despite a recent poll showing that improving the economy is the second most pressing concern of residents. The environmentalist majority also set aside other concerns. An important equity proposal promoted backup heat for all electric homes. The draft regional plan, the Carbon Neutrality Plan, and the last cab each promote all electric buildings with no natural gas plumbing. You must appreciate that electric-only heat poses a significant risk to Flagstaff residents, particularly the elderly and those with disabilities. Our winter climate often, our winter climate often features long periods of sub-freezing temperatures accompanied by several feet of snow. A recent Department of Energy report projects that power outages will increase by as much as 100 times between now and 2030 due to power plant decommissionings and skyrocketing data center demands. And the Southwest region is one of the regions that are considered most vulnerable. Electrically heated homes and apartments in Flagstaff should be equipped with backup sources of heat to prevent a tragic loss of life during the growing threat of prolonged winter power outages. Including this position in the regional plan failed to get committee approval. Another concern about the planning process has been the role of the contractor, Cascadia Partners. Gathering public opinion and analyzing the data were key tasks for Cascadia. Unfortunately, their procedures focus more on shaping opinion. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Well, next here from Phil Goldblatt. Again, if you could please state your name and the address for the record?
Phil Goldblatt, 3846 South Wild West Trail, Flagstaff. Chairman O'Mandino, Vice Chair Norton, and P&amp;Z Commissioners. I have here a summary of the U.S. Government's Report on the Impacts of Greenhouse Gas Admissions on the U.S. Climate, prepared by five distinguished climate scientists, all of whom have done exceptional PhD research on climate change. The Climate Action Section and the Goals and Policies Regarding Housing Attainability are of particular interest to all. First, it's a mistake to evaluate this plan with regard to calling these "non-negotiable" simply because the city declared them emergencies. The revised statutes defines what an emergency is, and these are not aligned with those definitions. And speaking of definitions, as you all have well testified, the revised statutes 9-461 governs which requirements this plan needs to meet for approval by P&amp;Z. Public welfare is one of these requirements. With regard to the social cost of carbon, this U.S. Government report says that "for most economic sectors," and I'm quoting, "the impact of climate change will be small relative to the impacts of other drivers. Changes in population, age, income, technology, relative prices, lifestyle, regulation, governance, and many other aspects of socioeconomic development will have an impact on the supply and demand of economic goods and services that is large relative to the impact of climate change." The sections I would like to see changed, therefore, involve the idea that 2030 is quite unrealistic and very costly to our community for achieving carbon neutrality. So the Carbon Neutrality Plan also needs to be changed because it is referred to in this new regional plan. Without state and federal level support, both carbon neutrality and affordable housing goals will be unattainable in this timeframe. Furthermore, as I've testified previously before city council, the transition by the major power companies in Arizona needs to take place first, so that only, and that can only occur by 2050, not 2030. So though I see many improvements to this draft of the new plan, I believe that until the above is remedied, P&amp;Z should deny this version of the plan. The government report, this government report also shows that the impacts of global warming are not an emergency in the true sense. Please refer to revised statutes 26-301, and you will see that this threat is mostly overemphasized. As far as housing attainability is concerned, I prefer the free market as well as efforts to bring better-paying jobs to Flagstaff, as our former mayor Deasy attempted to do, be the emphasis, rather than goals that increase costs to our city and residents so significantly. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Haley Creighton. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Haley Creighton. I live at 1,000 West Forest Meadow Street. Good evening, afternoon, not quite sure what to call it where we're at. I am the Northern Regional Director for the Arizona Students Association and a member of the Northern Arizona Interfaith Council. We have been following and have participated in the development of the regional plan from early on. We deeply appreciate all of your work and your commitment to our community. We'd like to draw your attention to some potential issues around inequity within this plan. As a group that organizes around the common good, we want you to know that we support the prioritization of climate action and housing within this plan, particularly how the two are connected. We also feel that there might be a missing link around transportation. If families are going to be displaced due to the lack of affordable housing, what is being done to support transportation to and from homes, jobs, schools, grocery stores, doctor's appointments, et cetera? We want to be sure that various modes of transportation are considered meaningfully and effectively here, like cars and public buses, as well as the walkability and bikability of the city. It seems that there is an assumption that most will have access to personal vehicles if they are forced to move to new locations. As members of the community, we know this to be false, as even prominent leaders within NAIC do not have personal vehicles themselves. Should there be something more explicit written in this plan around public transportation? How do we ensure that the bus systems in the city are accessible not only physically but also monetarily to all of its people, especially those in more rural, low-income, and student-focused parts of the city? How can we work to prioritize other modes of transportation, like bikes and walking, to address climate issues? These are questions we would like you to address and take into consideration. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. All right. Marilyn Wiseman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Marilyn Wiseman. I reside at 1055 East Apple Way. I'm on the Board of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. I want to thank you for considering and discussing our comments and those of others in your last meeting. Our organization has put a lot of time and work into studying the plan and communicating with staff. At the last meeting, you put off discussing the issues related to water until Lee Williams could be here for comment. This afternoon, I want to share with you my thoughts about the regional plan's guidelines regarding reclaimed water uses, as shown in the Guidelines for All Land Uses, Page 4-14, All Categories, Third Bulletin, where it states, "Limit private or public green spaces that require irrigation. Emphasize the use of reclaimed water where available, and provide reclaimed water for private ecosystem or recreational beneficial use." In our FQ written comments, we stated that the use of reclaimed water should focus solely on public lands for public recreational uses within the city's urban growth boundary, as well as for ecosystem benefit, and that reclaimed water is a resource that is and will continue to increase in value as the city explores potable reuse to supplement currently used sources of water. I wanted to talk a little bit more about this, and that reclaimed water will eventually be needed to supplement our drinking supply. And we support the Flagstaff Water Group's efforts to come up with technology that can clean this water for that use. If the public decides that it's important for our limited water resources to be used for public recreational purposes in the future, we'll support that. What we don't support is the use of this water for private or for profit recreational uses within or outside our urban growth boundary. We need to take seriously climate change and the effects it will have on our aquifer, and now also the threat from fracking on the possible future water supply at Red Gap Ranch. We have to start planning for a future with limited water, and the uses must be prioritized. We don't want to tie up the future of our water with contracts that may hurt our community in the long run. We want our regional plan to make clear that potable water should never be used for recreational purposes. If reclaimed water is not available at a location, then those recreational activities will have to be elsewhere. And where it is available, it should be for public and not private recreational uses. Until the day our water sources are combined, we would like for this to be our policy. Thanks.
Thank you. William Clouin. Again, if you'll please state your name and address for the record. And it says that you're speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more, the Open Space Commission? Are they, is everyone here from the Open Space Commission? Can you please stand up if you're with the Open Space Commission? I need to see that you're, so...
It's not a quorum.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a quorum here.
Do you have...
I can speak on my own if that's...
Um, yeah, okay.
Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is William Clouin, 2333 North Fremont Boulevard, and I'm a member of the Open Space Commission. At the September 10, 2025 session of this hearing, Open Space Chairperson Jacqueline Thomas presented 18 written recommendations and made a number of oral comments related to those recommendations. After that session, the Open Space Commission thought it would be well to supplement those remarks. Our four comments are as follows. First, we believe that the open space recommendations are crucial to ensuring that the 2045 Flagstaff Regional Plan represents core priorities and considers open space in an integrated manner that meets community values. To that end, we took great pains to explain why each recommendation matters in adding to the quality of life in Arizona. Second, we endeavored to make the recommendations practical and offered suggestions on how to include them in the final plan as targeted adjustments to existing language, recognizing the limitations imposed on modifications at this late date. We are seeking to balance the many priorities of the Flagstaff region. Third, we believe that our recommendations are supported by the comments of many participants at the September 10 session. Friends of Flagstaff Future, Flagstaff Biking Organization, and several individuals commented on the importance of balancing core priorities with complementary priorities to ensure that the Flagstaff Regional Plan, for example, includes adequate access and connectivity now and in the future. Fourth, it should be noted that the Open Space Commission's recommendations were not made in reaction to the regional plan. Indeed, we applaud the yeoman's effort by the city staff in balancing priorities and organizing information. Rather, our recommendations are based on insights gained by engaging the community in the development of the Observatory Mesa Implementation Plan. In addition, there is ongoing community engagement and oversight of FUTS, a picture canyon, a McMillan basa. So we believe that the open space recommendations represent the views of a broad spectrum of the Flagstaff community. We appreciate your considered review of our recommendations, and I thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Stephen Sumner, Summer, sorry.
Hello, y'all. My name is Stephen Sumner. I live at 3855 South Jewel Drive in the University Heights neighborhood. And I'm a retired professor from NAU, and I serve on the Board of the Northern Arizona Climate Change Alliance. And I would like to tell you that some of the misinformation you've just been given by earlier presenters is just dead wrong. As a climate scientist, I can tell you that the last time I spoke in front of y'all, we had projections for reaching 1.5 degrees centigrade global average warming in the year 2040. That has now changed. We will be reaching 1.5 degrees centigrade warming sometime during the year 2028. So the 2030 goal, the net zero by 2030 goal, is very important. Contrary to the poo-pooing of climate change as not an issue, the projections are for costs to the United States and the globe to go over $53 trillion when we reach 1.5 degrees centigrade warming. We're already seeing hundreds of billions of dollars in damage every year. We're already seeing that home insurance companies are starting to draw back and change their policies. So I had neighbors in University Heights who had their homeowner's insurance policy canceled because of the fire risk. That's because of climate change and the drying of our forests. So these are real costs here. The NAU Economic Policy Institute put out a report last year that suggested that a catastrophic wildfire in our community would cost over $2 billion. So these are not light economic issues for us in Flagstaff, for us in the United States, or for the globe. Already agriculture is being pushed northward, et cetera. We've got, Northern Alberta has gone from winter wheat to growing corn. Corn production in Canada has been going like this for years now. This is from a report actually from 2017 in the Wall Street Journal. So this has been going on for some time, as opposed to corn production in Iowa has been bouncing all over the place. It's no longer the king of corn because climate change is upon us. This is not some theoretical future thing. We don't know, we don't make the connection when we go to the grocery store and the food prices are higher, that we've got $163 billion in crop losses every year due to climate disasters. These are things that we're paying for now. These are not theoretical, small economic impacts. These are huge for our community. So let's please keep the net zero by 2030 goal in mind and strengthen it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nat White.
Nat White, 1120 North Rockridge. I'm here representing myself, although I am on the Open Space Commission. I wholeheartedly support their well-researched suggestions, corrections regarding open space, resource protection, and the foot trail system. But today, I want to focus on my personal concern with a fundamental statement in the plan. And I paraphrase it, housing availability and equity, attainability and equity and climate change are two non-negotiable objectives in this plan. In the plan, non-negotiable objectives specifically relegate natural and cultural resources, a healthy economy, resilient public services and facilities, and walkable mixed-use communities as complementary priorities. Here's my argument for replacing the absolute phrase "non-negotiable objectives" with the more inclusive phrase "principal themes" of this regional plan. The term "non-negotiable" is an absolute term and implies a specific measurable result. It relegates all the other elements of a healthy community as merely complementary. Here's an example that illustrates the problem I have with this. Here's a family discussion. You are going to college. This is non-negotiable. Everything else in your life is complementary. This kind of absolute approach does not align with the broad vision of the regional plan. Housing attainability is a fundamentally important aspiration. However, housing attainability is affected not just by housing density or choices of housing types, but by the national and microeconomy and the fact Flagstaff is a desirable place to live and invest. But Flagstaff is also saddled with chronic low wages. Housing attainability is a moving target with many facets. The other core priority, climate action, eventually will benefit us all regardless of wages and the economy. So I believe housing, attainability, and climate action are themes that should be incorporated into our regional plan. The operative word is "themes," not "non-negotiable priorities." And if I have time, finally, as always, over the years, I've appreciated the work city staff does to meet the current needs with planning, with planning for the future also. All this amongst the many opinions and ideas a vibrant community like Flagstaff always has to offer. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So I have two more cards in front of me. I don't know how many people online want to speak, but if you do want to speak, you do need to fill out a card. They're in the back of the room, just a reminder of that. Next up, I have Valerie Bryant. Valerie, if you'll state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Hold on. Yeah, you need to speak into the microphone.
Can you hear me now? Okay, is that better? Good evening. I'm Valerie Bryant. I'm at 1300 North Indian Springs Lane. I do not have anything very specific to say about the plan, but it does overall, general affect the plan. And building on what Professor Summers' comments and so many of the ideas presented here tonight are hamstrung, as you know, by Arizona law. So many things we want to do, we can't because of the law. And so I appreciate the work done on the environmental aspects and the comments made by many people on the environmental aspects, but I ask, not as a commission, but as individual people and the audience here, as Geronimo Vasquez stated in his Arizona article on insurance, he said, "We need, these government and federal government people need to hear from you, their constituents. We need you to help at these higher levels to actually make the policies that can change the laws that will help." If we don't have any... If we don't have any new ideas coming from the Arizona Corporate Commission, from the Arizona State Legislature, from the federal government, we cannot move environmentally as we want to. And with no environment, we might as well forget about having a plan. So just an appeal to everybody to please listen, tune into the ACC, make comments, talk to the federal government, our representatives and our senators, and through civil engagement beyond voting, they make it very easy. It's a group on the web that makes it very easy to find out about what the Arizona Legislature is doing and to make comments. And so I ask you, please, as individuals, to do that, to help us make this plan a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Gallagher.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Gallagher, 813 West Coy Drive. I already submitted this into you guys as a written submission before, but I'm going to go over a little bit of it here. I believe that we needed to get away from the pseudoscience and start going to some real solutions here, so I'm not going to give you any of that fear-mongering from before. Now, for the land and use growth, one of the critiques would be the urban growth boundaries and infill priorities limit development on available land, potentially exacerbating the housing shortages and projecting population increase to approximately 160 by 2045. This could overlook opportunities for single-family home development and underutilized parcels, for example. For some of our other sustainabilitys, like the goals from the carbon neutrality of 2030, may impose costs without sufficient flexibility, especially in light of federal deregulations, and removes mandates for greenhouse gas controls, since most of the pseudoscience is being disproven because they weighted their data. Another part, I got many recommendations and alternatives for you. Is that three minutes already? Okay. Promoting single-family home development is number one. New infrastructure for water resources and self-sufficiency. Like for that one, instead of having to mitigate our scarcity, we will construct new reservoirs and capture runoff from the, that we get for the Colorado River system, store them on additional man-made above-ground reservoirs, as well as utilize our natural geology of these lava tubes we have underneath the city and use those for underground water storage. And then finally, on the water part, eliminate scarcity and we won't have to do recycled water and potable waters and worry about all that. Explore our geology and we can get primary water from the deep core of the earth, where we can actually explore and do the same technology they use for fracking, and we can pull out, I've heard up to about 15,000 gallons per minute on some of these wells. So those would be good considerations. Further, on some of the previous comments about it, overloading our power grid, going all electric and not having a diversity of energy sources, would actually put us more at threat on many different aspects, especially since we might end up having a shortage of electricity and having brownouts or rolling blackouts like California has because they've gone all electric. I go down, and I, part of the reason why I actually want to get back on here a little bit more is I actually added something for replanning for, also for more resilience, like say with the new, never mind, you got it all in the paper anyway. I also gave you a 50,000-foot overview analysis.
Thank you. Are there comments from people online? So there is somebody from online, all right? And it's, can you tell me who it is?
The name on the box is Hillary Turby.
Hillary Turby. If you will unmute your microphone and you have the three-minute timer to state what you'd like, but please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Hillary Turby with Symmetry Companies. Our address is 8601 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona. As you refine the draft of the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2045, I respectfully submit this recommendation. The plan should establish an acreage threshold that allows small sites to be processed as minor plan amendments. Specifically, changes affecting less than five gross acres of land should qualify for the minor plan amendment process rather than following the major minor criteria set forth within Section 2.7. Currently, the regional plan applies the same amendment requirements regardless of parcel size. This creates a disproportionate burden for small landowners and infill developers who often propose projects aligned with city goals but must navigate a full-scale plan amendment process. A minor plan amendment pathway for sites under five acres would encourage infill and missing middle housing options, streamline city resources, and balance oversight inefficiencies. Many Arizona jurisdictions scale their amendment thresholds by acreage. Scottsdale, for example, has major amendments triggered at 10 to 15 acres, depending on location. Mesa has a threshold of 10 acres in the downtown area and 160 acres elsewhere. Phoenix has no requirements for sites under 10 acres and only triggers a major amendment at 3 to 5 square miles. Peoria uses an 80-acre threshold for major amendments. Gilbert uses a 160-acre threshold for residential and 40-acre threshold for non-residential land uses. Introducing a five-acre cutoff for minor plan amendments would bring Flagstaff into alignment with peer jurisdictions and promote clarity. I recommend adding the following language. Requests affecting five gross acres of land or less shall be processed as minor plan amendments. Requests of 5.1 acres or more shall follow the established plan amendment procedures when otherwise applicable. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online or present who would like to make a statement? If you're present, you do need to fill out a card. Hearing and seeing none, we can go into discussion.
I think you may need to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will declare the public hearing closed at 4:40 PM. Thank you. And now we can go into discussion. So you have our holding.
Space, yeah. I think Lauren, I don't know if you're coming up to share it or if she's going to share it from the back of the room, but in just a second, it should come up on the screen. Just now, I was monitoring, and Elsa and Lauren, our associate planner and senior planner in the back, were typing up the spoken public comments, if those are anything you would like to bring forward. So I think the first question is, you were, last time, we pulled some things over from our temporary to holding space in terms of wanting them to be discussed. And perhaps now that you've had two weeks to look at them, the first question is, are there any numbers of the holding space ones? I think that's the temp screen. Can we go to the other one? The holding temp? Thank you. Are there any of these that you would like to take off the list before we get started with adding? Like, are there some that now that you've seen a staff response, you're like, never mind, I'm okay?
I can't see the screen.
Oh, it's not showing up down here?
No, no, it's down there. I just can't, there's nothing that I could read from this far.
If you, if you all could join the meeting, of course, silencing everything on your computer, including your mic and audio, and that might be an easier way to see it in front of you. Be happy to pause for a minute so everyone can get their screens. I know that'll make lots more faces pop up, but it's worth it if it helps you access the material. I can't make screens in the room any bigger. They're pretty big.
Can add that to the list.
quick statements. So at the last meeting, there was a request that staff kind of put in what we know or if there's support within staff or not for particular recommendations. And the commission got through four of those, which are the ones that say yes next to them. And then we discussed a few, but we didn't have everyone we needed present to carry on that conversation. Staff has tried to at least have an opinion, if there's one to have, but what you'll see is there's many of them who are saying, no staff recommendation. And that means staff looked at it, but we didn't necessarily have a recommendation either way, a reason not to look at that as a condition or a reason to look at it as a potential condition of approval. But acknowledging that there's, I think at this point, 67 items in the holding list and over 205 public comments, or almost 200 comments in the temp. I think that it is up to the commission how much of this should be discussed, if the comments are sufficient, or if you need experts here. I know that water services, sustainability, parks, recreation, open space, transportation, multimodal planning is here, as is the city attorney's office and the planning staff to answer questions.
All right. I don't, I don't know how many people have the ability, if you brought your computers with you, to bring that up. I can't see over the computer here.
Chair, if I may, you know, understanding that, I remember distinctly the discussion around reclaim water, given how that item was brought up again today in public comment. I don't have my computer up yet. It's taken a long time. Do you think we can just start to entertain that discussion?
That would be fine. Does, go ahead, Commissioner Norton.
Yeah, I know the water thing was, water discussion was definitely part of some of the points brought up by, you know, on the F3 letter. I almost think that we'd be more efficient if we just went through the holding space and gave the thumbs up, nay or, you know, yea or nay, do we continue to discuss? Do we pass? Do we, do we want it? Then try to sit here and decipher if there's something we want to kick off right now. I think what we, I mean, what was elevated, I think, was worthy of discussion. And one of the points I want to make is, this new plan, this version, came out in August. This is a really quite a quick turnaround for public review. And I think for the people that have stayed with the program, so to speak, and continued to evaluate it and add these final tweaks, I think they, I think they deserve some discussion if they are something that we can, you know, that it would be valid to add, that would create value to the plan. So I don't want to be quick to dismiss some of these, some of these things.
Commissioner Norton, sorry. Ooh, that got very loud. I'm not quite sure how the volume got turned up. I know. So there we go. Okay. Now, and I'll move this one back because yours seem to not be picking up very well, but this one's very sensitive. I do want to just correct one thing, that the plan has actually been out for public review since July 19th. So everyone's had about two full months, similar to the 60-day public review provided in the fall, just because it's, it's been part of your packet since August. But we sent it out to all of you July 19th, just to remind everyone and to everyone on the newsletter. So should we start then with the, and I'll maybe ask Lee Williams to come be on deck here for these next couple discussions, to discuss the proposed change from the Flagstaff, Friends of Flagstaff's future comment about removing language from the plan amendment category associated with expanding the urban growth boundary? Is that where we should start and just work down the list? Is that your suggestion?
Number five, where we left off.
Number five.
Before we do that, I just want to make sure, it seems like we had a handful of comments that were given to us today that might be not in this list, so will we have opportunity to add them to the holding chamber later?
They are all typed into the temp already. So all you have to do is say, I'd like to bring that forward. I guess the suggestion I heard from Commissioner Norton was she wants to go through the ones you've already put on the list first and then bring more forward if needed? Okay.
Yes, that's what I was suggesting, unless somebody else had another suggestion on it and had to go about it.
So to start with item five, Commissioner Marr, is that agreeable to you, just to go through it item by item? Okay.
Excuse me, I just have one question. Is this list that you have up on your screen also in the agenda?
It's been added to since it was placed in your packet because what you're looking at on the screen is the live edition. So every comment that came in today, and there was about four, is here. So this is the active one.
So that's why we can't see that on the agenda list, is what's on your screen, because this is.
So if you look on the screen, you'll see to your right that there's pages and pages of these comments. This is only the first, well, this is actually the second page of comments, because the first page, we already went through at our last meeting. So it is a living document, and you'll see as we go down that, I don't know how many pages it is, but it looks like it's quite a few pages of comments, so.
Right. And when you've completed your work tonight, this will be added to your minutes.
Yep.
And it'll be live on the screen, shared with the public and part of the recording. So.
Okay, Commissioner Norton.
Yeah, I just want to ask for clarification. So there were two documents in the package. There was the holding space, which were the things that we elevated to holding space. So I have that. And then there was the other document that was titled "Other Public Comments Not Included in Holding Space," which staff also responded to all of those, which was amazing. Thank you very much. So I imagine what came in late today, yesterday, as well as during this meeting, is getting added to that, quote, "other public comments." So once we get there, past all the ones that we already have elevated to holding space, then we could potentially say which ones we want to elevate. I don't know, like, I'll just say what I did personally, as I went through that and circled the ones that I was interested in discussing, potentially in elevating. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, if they're going to want to, you know, give a thumbs up or down on all of those other comments or not, but maybe we'll talk about that process when we get past the holding space that we've already elevated.
Right. And the one on the screen, when we get to that second sheet, the other comments, has all the comments you've received since Friday when your packet went out.
Thank you. Commissioner Norton. So if we want to start on item five.
Right. So to summarize, item five, there is a phrase at the end of category three on page 2-7. And I'll read, I'll read the language really quick, so we are all on the same page about what the edit looks like. I just want to make sure I'm reading it accurately. The current. The current language in your draft plan is expanding the urban growth boundary to provide water and sewer services to allow an increase in intensity or density. And the proposal is to strike the words "to allow an increase in intensity and density." The staff comment is that this was meant to provide a nuance and cover areas that may have existing residents who are water hauling. Water hauling is certainly a way to provide water outside the urban growth boundary, but it is, uses heavy diesel trucks. And of course, there's the climate considerations of the emissions from that. And there's also just the expense to property owners and the convenience of having water hauled. That's been brought to the staff's attention many times over the last 10 years as being a desire from some property owners who would like to go from hauling to actually having water and pipes on their property. So the language was meant to say that if you are a property owner who's just continuing your existing use, that that could be a minor amendment. That's the intent behind the language in category three. And I'll ask Lee to come up and add any comments to that.
Is there anybody from F-Cube who can clarify the, the two allow of being stricken from the record?
I'm talking to the mic.
We put an explanation in our comments. Have you guys have that? I have, I'm sorry, I haven't looked at it before I came. We gave an explanation for that. And we talked to you about it too, Sarah.
Right. I think the explanation was that you want, that you didn't think there should be an exemption for smaller property owners who are hauling and who might want water services if they're outside the urban growth boundary. Because that, you'd rather it be just blanket, any water sewer services outside the urban growth boundary would be a major plan amendment.
Right. So thank you for the reminder.
That's what the letter stated.
Yes, exactly. And I don't remember talking about smaller haulers. It was more like we wanted a stronger statement that said, "Don't provide water outside the urban growth boundary." And I don't remember talking at all about haulers. So. Does that help?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Norton.
So water services outside the urban growth boundaries, but not, you're not saying you're limiting haulers that are taking water from inside city limits and taking it to their properties outside of urban growth boundary.
No, I don't remember talking about haulers at all. It was more like piping, like piping water, which goes with sewer too because the zones, zoning says you have to have sewer as well, or at least the policy. So the concern was putting piping out outside the urban growth boundary.
That's how I understood it when I read your.
Yes, thank you.
Read your letter.
Right. It's the staff comment that the really what, what was driving that language being there was to support allowing pipes for people who are hauling customers who we could provide water to in a way that would, you know, work for, for allowing people who have failing wells and other things outside of the existing water system. I know, Lee, could you speak a little to the wells, the private wells we see around the city of Flagstaff? Are they accessing the same water that we are with our water system?
Yes, so most wells within city limits and outside of city limits are tapped into the sea aquifer. So we are accessing the same body of water underground. And as far as expanding the urban growth boundary, I, I see that, I mean, as a major amendment, if it's the will of the governing body and the will of the people to expand it, then the city will provide water services to them. I don't, I don't see any reason to provide water services outside of the urban growth boundary until it's been approved. Is that, is that a correct answer to that question?
And that is what F-Cube is asking for. Am I correct in that understanding?
Right. The way it is currently written, if you, let's say you have a property and your well fails and you come, and you're outside the urban growth boundary and you came to the city and said, "I'm not changing what's going on on my property or changing my zoning. I simply would like a pipe of water." That would be a minor amendment to the urban growth boundary. And a major amendment would be someone who says, "I would like water to serve a new subdivision or a new land use that's expanding intensity and density." So that is the current proposal. Removing the latter phrase would mean both of those scenarios are a major plan amendment. So that's, that is the, that is the difference between the two. So, so Lee is right. In either case, water services wouldn't start providing services outside the urban growth boundary until the plan is changed with an amendment. It's just what type of amendment should it be?
All right. Do we have any questions from commissioners?
It just sounds like a bad idea to me. I'd say leave it as it is.
That, my thought too, was that it's the way that you just described it, that it would be a minor amendment change as opposed to a major amendment change for a smaller person, maybe personal property would be. I, I would agree with that.
And, and that is a change from the current plan. The current plan would require a major plan amendment in both of those circumstances.
The current plan would require a major plan amendment?
In both of those circumstances, yes.
So approving the language that's proposed here would make it a minor?
Sorry. But striking the language, as suggested in the comment, would be consistent with the current policy in our current plan, but would not make the distinction that I described of a smaller, no change to intensity and density land use versus one that is. Current, the current water policy would also have to be updated if this change were approved by council and the voters because currently the water policy doesn't allow that kind of expansion. So this would be a, a first step in creating a more nuanced water policy for water provision outside the urban growth boundary. And as Lee said, the wells and the water haulers are using the same water that the city is using. They're, they're not, we're, all our straws are in the same body of water. So that is another reason why staff had recommended this. This is something, there have been property owners who've come to us requesting this flexibility. It is not, staff has not been able to offer it. It's up, really up to the council and commission and the voters if we want to provide that opportunity or not in that way. Because a major amendment is done, adds a lot of cost and time to a process. And so smaller property owners have not been able to afford or access that process.
Commissioner Norton.
Yeah, so is the only change, I was, this change generated. If, if the current plan requires it as a major and you're now recommending it as a minor, is it just because various property owners have come to you and this has become an issue? And it's just administratively a heavy lift to do a, a major? Is that why we want it to be a minor?
That's what generates, that's what generates the issue, yes. And staff supported that issue for, as we said, that they're, they're not getting different water. It's, it's the same water. It's just being conveyed in a different way. If you have a well that's accessing the sea aquifer or we provide you a pipe. And also that there is, there's the hauling issue of people who are hauling are also producing a lot of emissions with their water. And this could be worded in a different way. You know, you could find a third way if you think the language is not helpful and could be worded differently. We can do that. And this is a big one. Like, this is worth spending some time on because there's, there are nuance to this and it is, it's not going to change right away. Like, the what level of plan amendment is required would change quickly. But Lee and his staff would have to, water services would also have to update the water services policy as part of their master planning to really carry this forward if it's something you're interested in.
So if, if you start to allow, you know, water to, water services to be outside of the urban growth boundary, does that start to create any other unintended consequences of where you just start to loosen that urban growth boundary line, so to speak?
Yes. So generally speaking, we've had a few requests for this in the past year or so, and we have denied them. It is my preference and our staff's preference that we do not extend water services to people outside of the urban growth boundary and especially not outside of city limits. Frequently, we sell water to them, but then they're not on city sewer. And then we have some of these, you know, the development kind of leapfrogs them. And then you end up with these islands with substandard utilities in the ground that begin failing. There's a couple of county islands. I don't want to point any fingers, but there's a couple of county islands that exist within city limits where this has happened before.
And whether, either way you go on the major plan amendment category, that would not preempt water services' ability to say, "We're not interested in providing services here." That's a wholly separate decision made out of their policy, which is more administrative than the plan is. So it's a new, I know that makes it difficult because it's, we're setting the high-level policy with the regional plan and then the details are what trickles down.
I have a question. Is this something similarly that's happening in Scottsdale? It's been very controversial where they're trying, people outside Scottsdale city limits, there was a pipe that they were. Is this very similar? And how many people are we talking about that are coming in and asking for this amendment?
If, if you, if you don't mind me asking a clarifying question, Commissioner Shi, are you referring to the North Scottsdale neighborhood where they tapped into the Scottsdale water supply? But then there was a cavaat in their licensing that said that if Colorado River water is limited to the city of Scottsdale, their, their supply will be cut off and then the neighborhood had no water?
I think it's regarding the area that, I'm not sure it's that specific. I thought it was up near, you know, northeast Scottsdale area where for years they, people were water hauling. And like you, like, it sounds similar. The water is actually coming from the city's water, but it's going outside. And the city said, "No, we're stopping it." And that created this controversy. That's why I'm asking is, like you said, if this proliferates like it did there, lots and lots of property owners ended up being in that situation. So with the people that are asking for this, are we talking a few parcels or several, 50?
Yeah, I've, I've been in this role for about a year and a half and there's just a handful of parcels. And to address the Scottsdale question, I think it's a separate issue. I believe the Colorado River Accord was signed last year. Allotments were changed. Scottsdale got less water. And they said, "Well, we, in your contract, it said that if we don't have this amount of Colorado River water, we're cutting these certain areas off." So I think it's a different issue. Do you want me, does everybody understand the urban growth boundary and the genesis of it? Do you want me to kind of go through that real quick? So it used to be called the urban service, no, utility service boundary. And it was a line drawn around a certain elevation in Flagstaff. And it was everything where the sewer could gravity feed to the wastewater treatment plant. That is, that is where it began. Because we did not have lift stations. We didn't lift our sewage to move it around like we, they do in other municipalities. Things have changed in the last year. City Council has approved code for lift sewers, which is going to allow development in these areas that couldn't have a gravity-fed sewer. So the urban growth, the urban, the utility service boundary became the urban growth boundary. And it's now, it's malleable. If it's, if it's up to the will of, you know, council and the people and they want to vote and say, "We want to extend it." But it, we do have the possibility to move that sewage from these areas that we could not move sewage to the plants before.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions, discussion? How would we like this language written? Because I'm not.
Yeah, I'm unclear as.
I'm unclear as to what, because the language looks the same.
So the, the proposal from the commenter is to strike everything after the word "services" to shorten the major plan amendment category. Let me read it off again. The, the category on page 2-7 reads, "Expanding the urban growth boundary to provide water and sewer services." This is where the period would go if you wanted to adopt this change, "to allow an increase in intensity and density." We could also recommend rewording it or offering options to council if you don't feel you have a prepared, a prepared statement on it.
Tell me the difference that happens if there's a period after sewer services or if there's the rest of the language to allow an increase in intensity or density?
If you strike the language, all changes to the urban growth boundary will be major amendments. If you do not strike the language, some, and this will require further explanation in this water policy before we'll fully know how to interpret it, I'm sure, would be allowed to be a minor amendment because they will not be increasing the intensity or density. So that would mean same for same. They're just doing what they've been doing, but this time with a pipe.
Do you want me, like anecdotal evidence would be, John Q. Public lives just outside the urban growth boundary. He says, "My neighbor has water. Why can't I have water? I would like water at my house." He's outside the urban growth boundary. With the change, he would have to go through a major amendment, this one person. Without the change, he would have the possibility of going to water services and petitioning us to supply water to them. And it's, it's been our practice to not do that. The flip side is, so with the increase in density, it would be not John Q. Public anymore. It's a developer who says, "I own this parcel of land. I want it to become part of the urban growth boundary. I'm going to develop 300 homes on this property. I'd like to amend the urban growth boundary to supply water and sewer services to this place."
And an increase in intensity and density could be smaller, too. It could be, "I own a 10-acre parcel and I want to build five 2-acre, split it into five 2-acre lots." That would be considered an increase in intensity and density that you would need water services to achieve. It would trigger a major amendment. So I mean, those are two big examples that are pretty far apart. But that's, that would be sort of the nuance that the language would, you know, would at least say what level of amendment it is. Whether or not water services actually wants to provide water to that property has a lot of other criteria and considerations beyond whether it's in the urban growth boundary or not.
Yeah, not to, not to correct too many details, but not whether we want to, but whether we have the capacity to, whether the piping from that neighborhood to the wastewater treatment plant, the sewer pipes are big enough to carry the new load and whether we have the wells and the distribution pipes that can carry the fresh water to those homes.
Ms. Madam Chair, for what it's worth, I don't think it's a good idea to start to change this to a minor amendment. I've done a bunch of projects in the state where, like Lee is saying, you cannot get water unless you are, you know, annexed into the city. You go through a whole process. You do studies. You buy water rights, other things like that. So I just personally think this is a slippery slope. And from a developer's perspective, like Lee said, you're going to have to do all these things. You know, if it's a one acre, once you start doing this for one acre, five acres, I don't know where it ends. So in, from my opinion, I think it should not be reverted to a minor amendment. We should just make acquisition for water or service a major amendment. Granted, it's going to hurt some of these smaller lots, but you don't want that kind of development proliferating because they don't have sewer, they don't necessarily have the roads and, and then you leap over them with the next project. So that's my two.
Fine, I made a check. But just a, a counterpoint to that. I think that there's more flexibility, right? We've entrusted and hired experts in the field to make these determinations, whether there's capacity in the system and, and what have you, if we go with what's currently written in the proposed plan rather than continue to restrict as, as proposed by F-Cube.
Do we want to take a thumbs up? Thumbs up for the lang, the language remaining the same? So leaving it alone? Yeah, that's a thumbs up.
So I'm with Commissioner Shi. So what am I voting?
So, so the thumbs up would be leaving urban growth boundary, expanding the UGB to provide water and sewer services to allow an increase in intensity or density. That's what we're. That's what we're putting the thumbs up.
So it would still require a major amendment? Are we doing, that would help me to know what we're voting on.
If you kept it the way it's currently worded, that would be the major or minor distinction. If you want, maybe, I may make a suggestion, Chairman Dino, maybe move on should you accept the comment as provided? Like, so should we accept the edit proposed in comment number five in the holding space? I think that, if you make that the thumbs up or down, that'll maybe make it clearer.
So I want it always to be a major amendment, so I'm thumbs down.
You'd be thumbs up because you'd want to, I know, this is, we're working out a process as we go. Thanks for everyone's patience. So if you, I think if, if that's okay with you, Chairman Dino, if, if we said, I'm thumbs up on number five, it means you support the comment from the public and you want to see the change made as the public proposed it. Thumbs down would be, I want to leave it where staff originally wrote it in the plan.
Okay, so the opposite of what I was asking for.
Yeah, I think if we do that, then if we can be consistent all the way down the list.
And then if we accept the comment, it means what? Tell me again, because I'm.
When, when you make your final motion, this will be one of the conditional.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Oh, okay, sorry.
If we accepted that comment, that means what in the plan?
We would strike the end of that sentence after the word services.
Which means that it's a.
All of it's major.
So on, do we want to accept the proposed change? If you do, give a thumbs up. If you don't, give a thumbs down. So we have four to three.
On thumbs down.
So a thumbs down.
So we'll put a no in that box then.
Correct.
And move on to number six, which Lee should stay up here for that one.
Item six, do you want me to read that, or do you want to read that?
Um, whichever, would you like to? However you want to work the flow here.
I'll let you go ahead and read.
Okay. So number six is also from the same comment letter. At the top of page four dash 14, there is a guideline for all land use categories that says encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas already served by existing infrastructure and public facilities. This comment would add language to it that says that it applies to any proposal requiring a development application. So here is, here is the challenge of this. And I think we tried to describe it that. It says forced, sorry. Sorry, I get the right one. It's the development of drinking water require, it says development required drinking water and sewer will be located within the urban growth boundary. And there's a, the sentence here says that we should revise the first guideline to make it clear that this language applies to a development, any development application. Here, here is the issue. That is structurally different than the way the whole plan works. Guidelines apply when there is a proposal for a plan amendment or for a zoning case. The language that actually will apply to every development application is what's in the water services' policy. So staff understands that the desire of this comment is to make sure that the urban growth boundary is applied to all development cases. That is the existing language in the water services' plan and, and how they implement their current policy. Writing this language in the plan, it's functionally changes how the guidelines work in a way that's inconsistent with the rest of the document. We often talk about you have to trigger a regional plan review. And not all development applications trigger a regional plan review. Updating the water services' policy would include a regional plan review, but that's different than saying this applies to all development applications. The plan is not code.
So thumbs up or thumbs down for adding that language?
Right. I think it functionally is the same given your last decision.
Thank you. Item seven.
So this one is under all categories, revise the first guideline. Sorry, this is where I got confused. I jumped ahead. The first guideline is the one that says encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas already served by existing infrastructure and public facilities. And this one would say while minimizing and mitigating displacement. This one might be one that housing may want to talk about because, thank you, Lee. You'll be back up. Don't run. The, so the city does have policy HA1 in the draft plan, which talks about minimizing and mitigating displacement. It is an important housing attainability issue. And I know, I think Jennifer's here. Okay, good. And it was not initially put in a guideline because we have limited ability to enforce the kind of programs it takes to minimize displacement on private property in all cases. Maybe Jennifer could talk a little about that.
Sure. I, I didn't know if you wanted to, like, read, do we need to provide context, or is everybody clear on what the change is? Because I can just delve into my staff thoughts, but I just didn't know if you wanted to frame the change.
Yeah, I think. I think that's what I was trying to read off when you were making your way down. But yeah, I can pull it up on the screen, too. But basically, the proposal is to add this language while minimizing and mitigating displacement.
Right, right. So when I'm, when I hear the words minimizing displacement as a, you know, housing person, I'm immediately thinking, I think the most impactful way to go about that is funding, provision of some financial assistance, right? I think there are other kind of more minor, more subtle approaches we could take to try to mitigate, mitigate displacement issues, maybe not so direct. So if we're going for the full impact here of trying to truly assist people in need of, of a financial solution or a housing solution, my brain goes to funding and provision of financial assistance. So, and then I also go to, okay, that sounds like a programmatic solution, right? Like that is going to require some eligibility guidelines, some determining of who, who's eligible, how much assistance, what does this program look like? What are we trying to achieve? You know, if the city is leading this. So this is all to say, this is a highly programmatic solution to a very real problem, but a very complex problem with a lot of different variables. So I think the quickest, like, staff kind of response I want to convey to you is, I hear this and I see a top-of-the-planning pyramid solution, right? Like Sarah's planning pyramid. We're at the very tip-top. We have funding mechanisms, programmatic solutions to try to implement the broader plans that we already have. And so my initial reaction to this adjustment or this comment is that, that's a very programmatic solution to a regional plan policy. That wouldn't, that would absolutely need to be developed. We can't do any of this stuff without really delving in as staff in identifying funding for this, like I said, and developing what could potentially be a fairly elaborate program response that we have never quite managed to, to figure out. Just because there's so many variables involved, like I was saying, like I, I'm going to, I'm thinking of who is eligible? We have renters in town. We have homeowners in town who might be displaced by a new development. And of course, they might have been compensated by a developer, but was that compensation enough for them to go find adequate homeownership elsewhere? Maybe not. Does that mean the homeowner should be eligible for displacement assistance? Are we only talking about renters? And where's the line? I was trying to get this across to Sarah, like, how much money is enough money? And it's just kind of this, becomes this very large question for us as staff that we're, we're very well aware of, you know, these issues. But I go down this whole path of like, is the regional plan going to help us identify who becomes eligible for funding? And how much, like, at what point is it sufficient? Like, we have adequately assisted these displaced people? It's a very hard question to ask.
So can I, I heard you say something, Jennifer, about the planning pyramid, and I want to make sure I understood it, which is, this is a programmatic, mitigating and minimizing displacement is largely a programmatic issue. The guidelines are supposed to apply to development cases. And applying that language to an individual development case could end up being very subjective and a one-off, as opposed to having a more robust program where the housing program is established and sets the criteria. Is that accurate?
Clarification, yes, yes.
Commissioner Norton.
I think when I first read this, my, my question was, how could this be measurable? You know, and I, I just, I understand the intent. I just don't know that it serves what we think it might serve.
And I'll agree with that. When I see a word like minimize in a contract or something like this, that's a measurable term that you're never, ever going to achieve. And how can you prove that you did achieve it? And then as far as mitigation, I think you addressed everything. And then there's downstream mitigation, you know? I get displaced, well, I'm going to move into some other apartment complex. Well, that's going to displace somebody else. There's all these things that could keep going. I think it's as written, it's perfectly fine, it accomplishes the goals we want. I don't think there's a need to add the extra language.
So how do we want to proceed? Can we go back to the, we have the plan up, but can we go back to the comment?
Yes. Lauren can, Lauren's switching back and forth for you.
Okay, so we're on item.
Seven.
Seven. So a thumbs up or a thumbs down for revising, for considering this amendment? And we have seven thumbs down. All right.
Chairman Dino?
Yes.
May I request when there is a split vote that they reflect that somewhere in the notes?
Yes, we can put that in the notes in the blue column.
So the one, the one before was a split vote, I think it was five or four to three?
That was the one, that was number five.
Right. Oh, five.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to mute. I don't, I don't like to hear myself, so. Let's move on to item eight.
So item eight is a similar language change, but it's to a different page. So on page 518, under action items, which is the action items on chapter five, which is social and economic systems. The second high priority item reads as. What Jennifer Michelson was, was explaining was that, that needs to be developed as a comprehensive strategy. This task, if you added that, it would make that consideration, that consideration will be part of this task anyway, but it would make that more explicit.
So are, are you saying you're more comfortable with the verbiage in this action item than it was in the text elsewhere?
Sorry, hang on just a second. We're, we just discovered that people online may not be able to hear us right now. So I'm sorry to interrupt, but just take a moment and figure that out. Is it on the other one? Okay, it's back. Sorry, we probably were just having an internet connection issue. Would you mind repeating yourself, Commissioner Norton? I apologize.
I just wanted to clarify your comment there. So are you saying that you're more comfortable with this verbiage under this action item as opposed to the one we just discussed where it was in the text? Did I misunderstand what you said?
Do you want to answer that one? I, I mean, I suppose so, given this is an action-oriented, but I think Sarah was trying to say that the, the verbiage about mitigation or displacement mitigation was, is identified, it's already existing as a, I misstated, a policy HA1. So that policy is, is appearing in, in the plan as is. So those, that consideration could easily be applied to any of these, anything applicable there.
So it's there, but how explicit do you want it to be? Would be that, that's why staff's not taking like a strong support position. We're saying this one is more appropriate, but we would leave it up to the commission if you want to see the language here, or you trust staff to interpret that the policies about housing apply when we are developing strategies about neighborhoods.
In that sense, I could go either way.
I would lean towards being consistent and not agree to this one.
Okay, so do we want to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Thumbs, well, go ahead. Thumbs up or thumbs down? So we have, did everybody vote? One, two, three, four, five?
Five down, two up.
Thumbs down and two up.
We'll, we'll reflect that. So it's no, and then the split was five against and two in favor.
So now we're on item nine?
Yes. We're starting to make some progress. So we're going back to page 414, which is the guidelines that apply to development cases. Thank you, Jennifer. This will be water again, so Lee's gonna, I feel like we're really going to give all the staff a little up and down workout today in coming back and forth to the podium. No one will probably get off the hook. The language currently reads, student, uh, let's see, let me make sure I'm reading. It reads to, limit, the current language is limit private or public green spaces that require irrigation, emphasize the use of reclaimed water where available, and provide reclaimed, reclaimed water for private ecosystem and recreational beneficial use, beneficial use being a specific term. And the proposal would be to basically remove private from that list and replace it with public, put the word public in front of recreational. So it's, so then it would read instead of reclaimed water for private ecosystem or recreational beneficial use, for ecosystem or public recreational beneficial use, which is two o's in a row. Sorry.
So we have, did everybody vote? One, two, three, four,
Five down, two up?
And two up.
We'll, we'll reflect that. So it's no, and then the split was five against and two in favor.
So now we're on item nine?
Yes. We're starting to make some progress. So we're going back to page four fourteen, which is the guidelines that apply to development cases. Thank you, Jennifer. This will be water again, so Lee's gonna, I feel like we're really going to give all the staff a little up and down workout today in coming back and forth to the podium. No one will probably get off the hook. The language currently reads, student, uh, let's see, let me make sure I'm reading. It reads to limit, the current language is limit private or public green spaces that require irrigation, emphasize the use of reclaimed water where available, and provide reclaimed, reclaimed water for private ecosystem and recreational beneficial use. Beneficial use being a specific term. And the proposal would be to basically remove private from that list and replace it with public, put the word public in front of recreational. So it would, so then it would read instead of reclaimed water for private ecosystem or recreational beneficial use for ecosystem or public recreational beneficial use, which is two O's in a row, sorry.
Chair Mandino?
Yes.
So where does Snowball fall in this?
Where does what?
The use of reclaimed water at Snowball, where would this fall? I mean, does that, is that included within this or is that considered a private or public?
I asked that same question last week and I don't know the answer to it. Yeah, I, I feel like this question is bigger than Water Services. This is kind of a development issue, this is a council issue. Whether we are able to provide water to a private person or not a private entity, I think, I think gets into a lot of other issues. I don't, I don't want to speak personally, I'm up here speaking as the Water Services Director. So I don't know that I have an answer for this one. I wish I did.
Will you, we certainly do, will you explain how we currently provide water for private recreational uses or maybe what those are within the current?
Yeah, so currently, yeah, thank you. The most obvious thing that comes to mind would be a private golf course. The public does not have access, they can't pay to have access, you have to be a member of that club, that makes it private. Snowball is slightly different. The public does have access, but it costs them money to be there. So does that make it private? I don't know the answer to that. And to further confound the issue, there are new developments that have been proposed where they have private parks on private land, not private parks. It's a park on private land privately maintained, but it's open to the public. So we'd be denying water to those parks that are open to the public because they're privately owned and privately maintained. It, it gets very gray. And, and like I said, I think this is an issue that's a little bit bigger than Water Services. It would require input from multiple other divisions and potentially city council.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
I, I have one question. Do we have treated effluent that we as a city can use on parks or is, you know, with the purple pipe and the whole business?
Yes, we do. Thank you for the question. We have purple pipes that we water, I think most, Rebecca's in the crowd, most of our city parks with. Yes, most of our city parks are watered with the Class A plus reclaimed water purple pipe system. Many of S U S D's fields are watered with it. Continental Country Club is watered with it, Pine Canyon is watered with it, Snowball makes snow with it. And construction, it's used for construction purposes for dust abatement.
So to probably complicate this even more, the people that are living in these are generating the effluent that eventually is treated. And so we would be denying them possibly water, treated effluent for some of these parks. Is that what would happen?
Which, which people are we speaking to?
Well, you know, if we changed, if we eliminated the use of this water on not to be able to use on private property, none of those other projects would have water, correct? Like Pine Canyon or Country Club or Snowball. So if we start picking and choosing who gets treated effluent and who doesn't, even though that development is generating its own treated effluent eventually.
Yes, I, I think there's, there's maybe another step in there is that the city provides potable water. It's used, it's made dirty, it goes into the sewer, the collection system. And there's, there's wording that says that they shall make no claim to that water, that is, that is a public amenity.
Thank you.
Right, so nobody, Lee, if I can question, nobody is like producing their own water and recapturing it. It's all part of a bigger water budget that the city manages for purple pipe. And purple pipe, if you've not seen the maps, is not provided everywhere in the city. And the last reclaimed water study, and this was part of, we talked about this a lot in preparing the plan, did not recommend expanding our purple pipe largely because of the potential for water reuse as drinking water in the future now that that has been permitted by the state. So it's complicated. That's the best way to say it. It's, there's no, staff does not have a simple answer to provide you with this comment, but it's very worth your time to discuss it.
I have a question.
So Commissioner Sharp?
So I understand that Continental Country Club purchases water for Lake Alayne and that's reclaimed water, is that correct?
That is correct. When Lake Alayne had water in it, yes, but all of their other ponds, the ones that are full are full of reclaimed water.
So as written by F3, that would no longer be allowed, is that correct?
Well, Continental Country Club is a private course, or sorry, a public course. So again, it kind of, it gets very gray. It's, it's open to the public, but it costs money to play golf on that course.
I guess what I'm thinking is in their lakes, they do not allow the public any use of those lakes at all. They're, they're only private use. So if those lakes are filled with reclaimed water as written, the, the city could no longer sell water to the Continental Country Club.
I, I think that's one interpretation of it, yes. Unless there's a, you know, a clause that says current users are grandfathered in in some way or another.
And I, and I think that'd be true. Current users wouldn't have a change until their water contract came up for renewal. So it wouldn't be an immediate change. You know, I think this question of like what, what is considered a public or a private? It might, it might be worth asking if the commenter is present to, now that they've heard this discussion, if they want to explain their intent.
To me, I, you know, looking at other cities, and I'm just going to say that if you were in Phoenix and you were golfing at a public golf course that was city owned, you'd still have to pay to play at that golf course. You don't get to pay for, play for free. So it's, you know, so saying that because this is an entity and you have to pay for golf there, you would probably have to pay for golf if the city owned a golf course. Okay? If the city owned a, a public facility, you might have to pay for services at that public facility. I haven't used a park in a long time, so I don't know if there's a charge to use a Ramada at the park. So see, if you're charged to use a Ramada at the park and it's owned by the city, you're still paying, you know, it's, it's, so I, I think that to me that is almost a mute point because you would still be paying the city to use that facility in those places. So comparing that is moot to me. And I, I see we have F4 that wants to come up and, and speak about that to clarify.
Thank you, Chair Womack. I just wanted to clarify, the idea of this one was not related to having to pay fees to play golf or anything like that. What we are getting at is what Lee said, is the protection and conservation of reclaimed water for, it's a public, it's a public source right now, right? Use it for public recreation, recreation on public land. That was the idea, so that we're not using our reclaimed water, which we may eventually be able to drink, given the latest changes with state, state law, that we don't give that water away to private uses only. We keep it with the public uses. Does that make sense? So it's, so it's coming from the public, it's going back to the public.
I understand that. I have a question for the city. Do we, do we charge private, the private golf courses that use public water? Do we charge them for that water?
We do, we have a rate schedule. It is, for reclaimed water, it is one-third of the potable water rate currently.
And, you know, my thoughts of this are, yes, it could be potable water in the future, but won't we still have more reclaimed water? The larger we grow, we'll, we'll have more volume of reclaimed water, is that correct?
That, that is correct. As the city grows though, I believe that parks are, you know, an integral part of our city. So as the city grows and the population grows, the number of parks grows, so the reclaim use grows with it. I spoke with Michelle a minute ago about the public-private kind of discussion and, and we decided it's probably kind of legal with a capital L discussion as to what's allowed by state law and city code.
Thank you. Do we want to do a thumbs up or thumbs down at this point? Are you ready for that? I'm sorry?
I have some more thoughts.
Okay, go ahead.
As I read this, and I'm not a lawyer, but as I read it, it seems like it's specifically prohibiting any reclaimed water from being used by private entities. Which, that may be something that the city wants to consider, but I don't think based on this that the city's ready for that. And my concern is if you can no longer sell reclaimed water to private entities, you're going to have a major change ahead of you. You know, you've got existing contracts that you can no longer satisfy. And the new sources, like if we can only use this for public use, all of a sudden you've got a whole bunch of reclaimed water you can't get rid of. And so I think the spirit of this makes sense, but it's not, we're not ready for it. I, I would say it's, it's a really bad idea.
Chair, if I may.
So go ahead, Commissioner.
I really think that this, this discussion that we're having now is, is, is part of a broader policy discussion that's more fit for a, a council discussion rather than something that's embedded within the regional plan.
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah, so I watched the city council meeting last night. So I saw your, I saw your presentation about the reclaimed water contract for Pine Canyon, as well as, you know, reclaimed water going through the Rio de Flag to, to replenish the riparian areas. It's also at open spaces on Monday where we talked about, you know, potentially a new sports field out near Cheshire where there would be no water available, but that would be, you know, synthetic turf. I mean, I think we're handling it as best as possible. And I understand, you know, the uncomfortable level of a private golf course using what, you know, our public reclaimed water and buying it. As opposed to like, say, a Snowball, yes, it's privately owned, but it's, anybody can go to Snowball. Whereas not everybody can golf at Pine Canyon. So that's the difference. But I, I, again, I don't think this is the place for it and there are contracts in place. And there are short-term contracts that, as was explained last night, that can be adjusted as technology changes, as needs changes. And so I am fine with leaving the verbiage the way it is written and not supporting the, the suggested change based on what I heard the last couple days.
So if, if we want to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down, can we do that now? Thumbs up or thumbs down? So that's seven thumbs down. Moving on, well, we were unanimous. Moving on to item ten?
Item ten was discussed at the last meeting and I'm sorry to put Commissioner Sheehy on the spot, but we had an inconclusive thumbs up or thumbs down exercise. The, the language here is to, under the urban center category, land use category, to add a new a new guideline under design and other considerations of activation of street sprints is desired, black blanks, sorry, not blank, or inactive walls are discouraged. The, the commission at the time, and maybe you've had time to think on it, was three, three neutral people and three positive people, like people like here, not fully thumbs down. Staff didn't have a recommendation on this. This current zoning code, and Tiffany might be able to talk about what those requirements are now, requires activation of buildings at the ground floor. And so there's, there's some existing requirements to this, but I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
We do currently have some architectural design standards. This is a very, very specific downtown related issue. The, the thing about zoning codes that's so difficult is that there are uniformity provisions. How we treat one property, we need to treat another property in the same zone. So just remember how that works. When you're looking at these policies and these guidelines, for the most part, they're going to be applying when you're looking at a rezoning case. And in most of these urban centers and cores, these are properties that already have their zoning, you're unlikely to see them in a rezoning. This might merit maybe a rework of architectural design standards to accomplish something more different. But the concern here again is about a parking garage on the ground floor. I know that over time, parking in the downtown is also quite an issue. Could this then only allow for a parking garage if fully faced with shopfront and retail, which would make that extremely expensive? So again, lots of things to consider there. Very, very specific detail could absolutely be dealt with in code. Would recommend rather than applying one-off just to rezoning cases, that it would be something considered broadly throughout our architectural design standards entirely.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, do we want to do a thumbs up or thumbs down again this time? With that explanation? Thumbs up, thumbs down? So we've got three thumbs up, a four thumbs ups and three thumbs down.
So that, so the condition of approval then would be to add this language to page four dash sixteen. The next one, number eleven, is has to do with Policy Map four dash three, which I believe is on page. Let me find the right page for that. So this is the, this is the map of urban trails. You might need to pull up this map to talk about it. This comment actually is in this list multiple times, so I'd suggest that if we address it once, we just skip the other times it's in the table.
What page is this map on?
I'm trying to find it right now. I think it's four dash thirty-six. Am I right? No, maybe it's four dash thirty-seven. Yeah, four dash thirty-seven is the map that this is pertaining to. So at the May second retreat that we had with council and all of you, this was a lot, we had a long discussion about this. And then we came up with a compromise that for properties over 400 acres because of the concern that this data is sometimes downloaded and used on like all trails or other apps as line data, that we show it in a way and we create the data in a way that keeps that from happening on these large 400 acre or more properties. So that is how we arrived at this. But there are, I think, at least four or five comments in the packet that all say we should move away from the compromise that was worked out on May second and not distinguish between parcels that are over and under 400 acres. I think, you know, obviously that council might feel differently about that or might agree, but I just want to make sure that that's tied back to the original discussion.
Commissioner Norton?
So this was in one of my comments, this is also part of open spaces. And I think like, you're right, it's been mentioned a few times. So I was, I went back to my notes from that retreat. And at the time of the retreat, we were talking about trail designations, whether they were solid lines or dotted lines or arrows pointing through a large parcel. So maybe there was, that we weren't privy to, maybe there was discussion of delineating the 400 acres, you know, with council at another time or in E session or something to that effect. Where I found that was in the proposal and the wish list of Little America, that that was part of theirs when they wanted that resort overlay. One of the points in that was they wanted, you know, no trail delineation on acres, acreage that was over 400. So that's where I beg to differ on, you know, where the, where the 400 division got added into the plan. And, you know, I, I know Open Spaces is here to, to talk to their point about it. Obviously, this is an F3 comment. Anyway, I stand by my recommendation.
Any other discussion or questions? Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Like, can we, I need to read exactly what they, yeah, what they, what they have suggested.
Yeah, I think the suggestion, and this is, I think you're right, I think it's open space. I know it was in Commissioner Norton's comments. It's also the Flagstaff Biking Organization and the Bicycle Advisory Committee all offered the same comment. So let's like, think of it all as, all those groups at once, was that we, we basically So let's like, think of it all as, all those groups at once, was that we, we basically take those, you know, fat polygon layers and just turn it into the dashed yellow line primarily. That's how I understand kind of the accumulation of those sets of comments, that we not distinguish between over or under 400 acres. We just say it either has property rights or it doesn't have property rights. And so if, if you can go, I don't know if you can pull up the, see the side, it says planned trails on private land with no property rights is the yellow dashed line, where the fatter, not really a line, but a polygon disguised as a line, is planned trails on private lands over 400 acres with no property rights. And I think that was meant to say these large properties give us more flexibility on trail location and that they're like to basically provide less precision. That's how staff understood the comments we received on May 2nd. And why we, the 400 acres was just discussed all day so that we just took that and went with it. And I think Martin Ince is here too, if you have any questions about trails and this particular proposal.
Okay, Josh.
So for these private property owners with the, with the current identified land trails that, as I, as I identified on the current map, what would happen if they decide as a private landowner that they decide that they're not going to, that where they'd rather have a different alignment at some point?
There's currently a disclaimer on this map. Let me pull it up and read it. I don't think, I don't know if you can see it in the, is in the information section of the online map. That looks like it's partial. So disclaimer, there's two disclaimers. One is about the depiction of state land, and that one has been worked out with state land. Has to do with the fact you need permits to recreate on state land, which most people don't get, and constitutes trespass. But designation of, the other disclaimer for privately and reads, "The designation of planned trails does not constitute a final location or legal access unless there is a legal trail easement. Future trails are conceptual in nature. If you intend to develop and propose to provide similar connections with alternative alignment." And I'd also like to point out that there are comments suggesting changes to that disclaimer as well that we haven't got to yet.
So regardless of the color of the line on this map, they would still have an opportunity to discuss alignment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So based on that discussion comment, then why do we even have the division of the 400 acres and more?
The concern on May 2nd was that the large property owners are seeing a lot of trespass and they have public safety concerns that are particular to larger properties because once you get on the property, people tend to create a lot of user-created trails and, you know, explore because it feels like open space. 400 acres, when you enter a 400 acre parcel, you might mistakenly think you're in an open space. And so that, that was the distinction. It was the one that was discussed. Staff didn't interpret it any further than was meant at the time. But I know that was like three months ago, four months ago. So the memory of exactly what we meant by that is, is a good question.
And, and of course, one of the property owners has gated off their property, fenced their property so that doesn't happen, and they, they have that right to do so. And also these maps, it's not like they get uploaded to trail apps and such. That was also the discussion, anyway.
All right, so are there any other questions?
I have a question. I do remember the discussion and I had some previous experience on large properties where we thought, oh, that's fine, leave it open, let people recreate. You know, and then later hazardous waste was, you know, trash was dumped and I ended up spending close to half a million dollars on cleanup and fencing. So, you know, it's the private property owner's responsibility to take care of their property, but I'm glad the staff added those disclaimers because, you know, it is good to show where a potential alignment could be. And I think most people would, you know, projects I've worked on, you'd be okay with that. And then you would figure out later on where it was going to go. But I don't really understand either why this 400 acre is some critical watershed moment because it looks like, you know, your disclaimer on it, the map now would cover most of the issues. And private people can fence their properties, sign it, put no trespass, talk to the police department about how to maintain it.
All right, so are we ready for a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Can you put the comment back on the screen?
Yeah, let's put it back on the screen. And it's worded a couple of different ways. So we might need to just like clarify what we're, what you're weighing in on here. This just says, remove the map distinction between properties over and under 400 acres. I think staff would then also like to know, do you want it to be the dashed line or the fuzzy knot line? Because if we unify them, which, which cartography are you interested in us unifying them under?
My opinion would be dashed lines because that gives you the idea that it's proposed or inspirational. The other ones are, you know, the purple is a dashed line for existing property rights. So I, I would say make everything a dashed line because it's all proposed.
Okay, ready for a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Okay, let's go. We've got all thumbs up. We down to 12. How many of these do we have just?
You selected 67 at the last meeting. There's over 200 in the other list, which is why I asked if you wanted to take any off at the beginning. No worries. I know it felt like a silly question, now it doesn't, huh?
It's, it's hard to look at this whole list and try to figure out what you would take off until you get there or if they're... So this one, you said there's four different statements that stated the same thing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just skip them.
Yeah, so good, okay.
We'll deal with that.
So.
And the next one is also trails related. I might need Martin to give you some background on these. But this one is ensure that future trail connections at Cedar Lockett, north of FMC and any other identified in ATMP are provided. So this is number 12. So we had to, we had to go back to the commenter, Martin and I, and request a clarification. So currently, the urban trails map just shows you the things identified as Flagstaff urban trails. The ATMP also has single-track trails and neighborhood connectors on the foots map. These are small, Mike, you would not be able to see them at the scale of the regional plan very easily, but these are small connections. They are in the ATMP. If you wish to see some examples of them, like the ones in the list here, Martin could pull that up. We had originally elected, as we did under the current plan, not to add those. That does not mean those are not rights of way or trail connections that the city wouldn't pursue purchasing an easement for. They're just not full-scale urban trails. So Martin, do you have anything to add to that? I know we spent, we spent a good amount of time discussing this because we had to make sure we understood it as well. See if Martin was listening.
I, I, I am listening. I, I think the only other, you know, one of, one of the concerns might have been, do we, do we lose any ability to implement those single-track access connectors or the, or the neighborhood connectors as part of private development? If it's in the ATMP but not in the regional plan?
Oops. Hold on, Martin.
Sorry, Martin, we lost.
Right.
We've the ability to hear you for just a second. Can you speak again?
Sure, you can hear me now, okay?
Yeah, we're just having trouble. The volume in this room is either like, is either extraordinary booming giant voice or very, very quiet and we can barely hear you. So we're just, we're having to fiddle with the tech. Hang on just a second.
Okay.
Nancy says try again.
How about now? Hear me okay? Okay. The only thing I would add to your, to your comments there is I think there was some concern from the commenters that if, if it were, if those maps of, of single-track access and neighborhood connectors were in the ATMP but not in the regional plan, does the city lose any ability to have them implemented or require them as part of private development? We can, we can certainly make them part of future city projects for implementation, but do we lose the ability with private development?
Right, and I think, I think it's important to mention that they do not appear in the current regional plan. Only, we did do an amendment to the maps of the transportation chapter in the current regional plan. And at that time, we had chosen not to put them up. Okay, is this the right one? Thank you, Martin. So this is map eight dash 13 in the ATMP. These are single-track trails, so not constructed foots trails in red. And then the blue ones are neighborhood trails.
Mr. Norton.
So what was the answer? Do we lose that ability to have that extra support and enforcement when it is in the map of the regional plan?
We need, I mean, we need to acquire easements for trails. There's no reason the city can't pursue an easement, but can we require a development to provide it as part of their public improvements? But I think Tiffany, isn't the, the section that talks about trails in the zoning code, do you know the exact language of it and like what it's tied to?
Trails in zoning codes?
Yeah, for public improvements, I think that's the language that it's tied to is. I think the question is, if this is in the ATMP but not in the regional plan, is the zoning code requirement for trails written in such a way that this is relevant to a development application? You may not, I don't know that I know the answer.
It's not an easy answer. It's not a yes or no answer. I, I guess similar to what we just discussed with regard to trails across properties, it's like if you don't have it there as, as an ask or as a hope or an inspiration, it gets ignored. That, that's my, that's my thought, you know? If, if we're looking at the regional plan, developers are looking at the regional plan, if it's not there, they're certainly not going to probably voluntarily seek out the ATMP to find if maybe there's a trail they should out there. I'm just looking to see, was this on FBO's list as well?
I think it might have also been on FBO's comment letter. They made a similar comment, especially about the one north of Cedar and Lockett. So I, I'm, I am playing devil's advocate here because I don't think staff has a strong position on this. You know, if you look at some of the neighborhood trails, those are pretty small, right? And a single-track trail is really just a rut in the dirt that people ride bikes and walk on. We don't have any standards for improving those, like they're not constructed.
So you think the question is to ask yourself, are you really gonna anticipate seeing substantial development here? And where, in which that would trigger public improvements to obtain that particular trail easement? So if you're looking at areas that are already primarily developed and you're looking for a trail easement, you're gonna have to acquire it in a different way. Does that help?
So I wish we had a picture of what we're talking about rather than the map. To me, that would help, but on the single track, you're talking about people just walking and making a trail in their neighborhood. And I'll give an example of that. So I live in Swiss Manor. There is a, on Linda Vista, there is, okay, you guys call it something else, I call it a ditch. And as far back as I can remember, there's been a trail that heads up to the top of the, the berm there. And I walk my dog there all the time because that's the way my dog goes. He likes to walk on the berm there. So it's not an established, it's an established trail by those of us who walk. I think that's city property, am I correct? And we just walk there. The city could put up barriers if they didn't want us to walk there. And a neighbor did put a barrier up at their house saying no trespassing so that people didn't go down their driveway. But would we require a connector? Is, is that the question? I I'm kind of confused by this issue.
I mean, the request is to add these red and blue, very small, the blue ones are very small. Some of the red ones, you can see a little better. From this map eight dash, eight dot 13 to the urban trails map. I think we'd have to bring them forward as different categories. And I think what I'm saying is that like they're, they are kind of difficult to require because there's no construction standard for them. We, the Forest Service does have like construction standards for single-track trails, but we don't have any in our engineering codes. It's just that we kind of support, I think what this says is we support buying an easement to make sure that single-track trail can continue to exist. So it's a gray area. We had, like I said, we did an amendment specifically for the ATMP. We did not include these in the trails map that we put in the plan today. So this would be in, this would be an add that would add new things to this map that were not part of that 2021 amendment.
I guess for me, I haven't heard a compelling reason to go ahead and do it. I would be a thumbs down. I don't hear enough justification to go ahead and do this. I, I would be a thumbs down.
I'm always gonna support trail access.
Okay, do we want to do a thumbs up or thumbs down? You ready? We have two thumbs up and five thumbs down. Thank, I, I want to thank the staff for all the time and effort and answering our questions and covering our confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next one is gonna take us to page three dash nine. So this is in chapter three. There were a lot of amendments proposed to best practices for creating a sense of place. And I guess I want to ask, does the commission want to keep going in order? Or should we talk about all of the things in the holding space that tie to page three dash nine all at once? Like, should we just skip down the list? And do the full list? Because I think that will, that's my suggestion for keeping us on track.
So for me, it would be good if we went through everything through the, the plan in order. Because I keep, I'm pulling it up. I know you're pulling it up online, but I'm pulling it up sooner. And then it's hard for me to go from three dash nine to eight dash two or whatever it is that we're gonna do. So I don't know if there's a way that we could do that.
The list doesn't resort that way very easily because it's in Excel, and Excel's its own problem sometimes. But we could, we could just start that right now, like go through everything in this list that's on page three dash nine.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the first item under three dash nine is to, in the first sentence, under best practices for creating a sense of place, to have something in here that says, this is used in conjunction with guidelines for all land use category. I'm sorry, the final sentence. So if we can go to three, three dash nine. really quick and pull that up, I can show you. The bottom of that page says, these best practices should be used in conjunction with guidelines in chapter four, growth and land use. This is saying specifically, it should only be connected to four dash fourteen, which is the guidelines for all land use categories. Staff disagrees with this comment because each of the land use categories also have design considerations that may or may not intersect with these best practices. So this limits the application of best, of these best practices more narrowly than staff intended. I don't think, I don't know if that was the commenter realized that or thought it was better to have it be more direct rather than the link just going to the top of chapter four. But it's, it is up to the commission if they want to propose it, but staff thinks this makes it a narrower interpretation, not a broader one.
So do we have any questions or concerns? Do we want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay. So we have, we had, I think, six thumbs down and one upstand.
One upstate, yeah, which is a vote with the majority always. Remember your trainings.
CJ, are you trying to get back in the meeting?
Oh.
Okay. Okay.
That's very weird. All right, then the second best practice says right now, creating a pedestrian oriented design at street level to create a vibrant and active civic spaces for all residents, neighbors and visitors. This is that street level thing for urban center is here under best practices. So it applies broad, more broadly than urban center. So I'm not sure why we needed the more specific, but it's fine. And then what, what this would add would be creating a mixed use pedestrian oriented design. Staff doesn't have a recommendation on this, but I think it's important to remember that this is written to apply to all land use categories, which includes those that may not have commercial or may have more limited commercial and mixed use. So mixed use adds a detail. I don't know if it's appropriate or not. We don't have a specific staff recommendation. We just wanted to remind you of the context.
Any questions or discussion?
What would be the benefit of adding mixed use to this?
You might have to ask the commenter.
And the commenter is? Do you want to ask? Would you like to address this?
What I was thinking about is what makes neighborhood character? And having some mixed use in a broad sense, I think can, is, exists now in areas of where we'd say a character, there's community character, like downtown, it's mixed use. So, um, I'm not, I'm not sure about this one now that I'm, I'm, uh, hearing what Sarah said. Um, the idea was to have the understanding that mixed use should be done in such a way that it, it provides that community character. But you're right, there's places probably where you don't want mixed use, right? So maybe it's mixed use where appropriate or where zoning allows for it. That's what I was trying to get at is how, how do you describe a place that has community character? And all the places that I can think of have mixed use. So that's where that term came from.
Any questions?
Can I add something?
Yes.
I, I think that some of the places maybe people aren't thinking of, given that comment that are pedestrian oriented is our historic neighborhoods are not mixed use necessarily. But they have porches and stoops and little front yards. And that can be an example of pedestrian oriented design at the street level that's appropriate for a residential setting. I mean, I think that's a whole part of the transect code is these idea of having frontage types and there are residential frontage types and commercial frontage types and there's, it's, it can be broader. And so I think that's a, if you add, let me, let me make a statement. And this applies to other comments that we receive from the public. Sometimes folks who are coming at this from a layperson standpoint, who aren't sitting at the counter, working with cases every day, are, they think adding specificity or lists is good explanation, but it can be incidentally limiting. Um, and I think Tiffany maybe wants to chime in with something here too. But there are other ones where people like, you should list all the federal agencies that we work with. What if they change names? What if that federal agency gets absorbed into another federal agency? Like list, we specifically struck some of the lists that were like this and this and this, like we thought, thought of them as like kitchen sink things because they could be considered, these are the only things we do that for instead of being broad. So I mean, that's, I think, the difference between something that's strategic and can be updated really easily versus this broad general plan. I just think this is the first time maybe I could make that point, but then I'll pass it to Michelle and Tiffany.
I think I have to hold it down. Hi, Michelle McNulty, Planning and Development Services Director. I just, I think I wanted just to add some clarity. I think we're using the term mixed use, but we're not talking about mixed use as a building form or even as a horizontal like, different developments that we see where you have some commercial, planned commercial retail. And we're, I think we're talking about neighborhoods that have a mix of uses. So I think that's more what we're talking about. So I think as you're talking about, like, as maybe there's greenfield development and there's residential with the commercial that comes on, that it's kind of oriented in a way that the people who live in that area can kind of walk and identify with that commercial. Is that what you were trying to say?
Right. I do think we have policies that cover that. We have DP seven. We have, um, some goals within the mixed use and commercial centers. So yeah, I mean, one of the challenges of a plan this big is like, how many times do you say something? I've often said that repetition is not emphasis. And this, this is a sentence that's largely about design. And might not necessarily uses within a building. So it can, or within an area. So it's, it's a tough concept to introduce and might lead to. I, I don't know what the consequences of adding it would be. That's why staff didn't write a recommendation on this. We felt we would have a hard time telling you what it could mean in the future.
All right. Are we ready to do thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. Let's go. It looks like it's all unanimous thumbs down.
So then the third, sorry, go ahead.
Um, let's, so I wanted to just say if they're interconnected on this, the third one or for the comments on this page, if after we want to take a little break and, um, when we get to that point. So just, so we do these pages, this page, and then we take a break.
So get to all the three point nine ones and then take a break. Staff might also be able to shuffle them so that they're in page order during the break or maybe else I could start on that.
I'd love for you to be able to take a break too, but.
Yeah. We want to keep you guys going. So, uh, we don't, we don't want to have a special meeting next week either. How's that? The, so the third best practice here is repeating patterns of streets, alleys, buildings and civic spaces within nearby historic districts or neighborhoods in site planning of new development in or adjacent to historic districts. And the proposed revision is repeating those things, but adding the word lot sizes. I can't speak to what adding lot sizes here might mean.
What was that? Adding what?
So it would be adding to this list that says street alleys, buildings and civic spaces, adding the word lot sizes.
Lot sizes, okay.
To this list.
I just couldn't understand what you were saying.
Yeah. And basically saying that if the, I think what it means is that if the nearby historic district has small lots, that you would provide smaller lots in your adjacent subdivision. So maybe a good, maybe a property to think of for this. I'm trying to like put a place in your head is the, the Baptist church that's up at the corner of, what is it? San Francisco Street and Cedar has a big, open, flat piece of land with their church on it. If they sold the church or if they wanted to put housing on there, this might mean that they have, that they would be encouraged by the plan to provide it in small lots. But Tiffany probably is our expert on lot sizes. I don't do this enough to know what else to say.
Usually this comment also is meant to prohibit like a large mass building. So it's saying we want smaller buildings in historic areas. So the sort of the combination of lots or parcels, just up the street adjacent to the old Catholic church site, for example. That's a two acre block. It's all one parcel of land. So would this then be saying that if they wanted to develop that, the only way to develop is to break it into smaller lots? We, we have already approved an affordable housing, larger development on that site. So again, just taking that into account, lot sizes, it's hard to manage and say people can't combine parcels. The historic lot sizes in a lot of these subdivisions were only 25 feet wide to begin with. So the majority of them have already been combined together into a, and there is no one consistent pattern. As somebody who has to look at code all the time and it says, tell me what the consistent pattern is in historic neighborhoods. Good luck finding it.
It's historic.
It's historic.
It wasn't, uh, parceled out the same way we parcel out today.
I, that it, lot sizes, it's, I think it's more meant to get to that massing and scaling. And I think there's other features here, like utilizing design that breaks up building footprints or bulk on mass. And I think that that's where that topic's really covered.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Thumbs up, thumbs down? We all have thumbs down unanimous.
Right. I do think these are, I just want to say, even though you're voting no on some things, I think these are valuable discussion points because they help clarify that we've been thorough in reviewing the plan. So this is one where maybe we might need further clarification. Number sixteen is adding a new best practice to this list on page three dash nine of creating walkable density within close proximity to open space. I, I think staff needs clarification on what the term walkable density means because that's not a term of art within planning. And so I think the, at the commenter probably meant something specific by it and we might need clarification on that.
And do we, is that F three?
Sarah, are you able to pull up the, um, the best practices again? Because I thought I had taken that from the best practices.
Lauren can pull it up. She's sitting in the back. She's got it.
Because I think, I was thinking of an addition that says it's within walking distance of open space. Because again, I was thinking about, um, uh, downtown and how you can, you have this walkable urban space, but yet you can still find open space within a very short distance. So that's what I was thinking. Let's see if I, um, can see that.
There, there is some language in a different policy under the same priority that talks about walking distance to parks and open space. But because it's a policy, we wouldn't have also put it in a best practice. It would just be in the policy.
And therefore it would need to be repeated in the best practices.
Correct.
Okay, good.
That would be what staff would.
So I would say it's covered if that's the case. I, what I was doing when I looked at this is I was trying to think of what, what makes downtown so, you know, great. And one of that is close, close proximity to open space. So if it's already covered, then my comment doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Don't go away though, because the next one's you too.
So thumbs up, thumbs down? One thumb up, everybody else's thumbs down.
Okay, six to one. So we're on seventeen. We just have a few more on page three dash nine before we take a break.
How many more?
Two, three, four, five, five.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so this one is add a new best practice creating, that stated creating fine grained visual diversity that reduces sameness such as variation in color, style and/or architecture. I wrote another note here. Staff is unclear what this means. There are architectural standards in the zoning code on how to determine and locate materials and the articulation of buildings. I guess we're unsure if this is trying to capture something different or just a continuation of what is required. And I don't know Tiffany, if you want to discuss what is currently in the code at all.
Um, we already have architectural design standards in terms of building materials, building colors, um, the placement of materials in relation to the type of architecture, style of windows. Those architectural design standards are meant to emulate the design traditions of Flagstaff, which I would reference being more closely to the downtown um, style of development. So I, I mean, you can replicate. But I, I'm not sure that that necessarily adds anything new or different unless it's add more diversity or allowance of uh, architectural design standards. Maybe, maybe our existing code is too limited. I'm, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Mar?
Tiffany, is there, there, I'm assuming that there's also items in the zoning code related to massing?
Yes.
Can you, can you repeat the question?
My question was, uh, in regards to, um, items in the zoning code in regards to, um, massing.
Commissioner Norton?
I think when I consider this comment in the context of creating a sense of place, I have a better feel for where they were going with this comment. And I can appreciate that. It's just, you know, is it necessary here if it's already part of architectural standards? You know? I think that just a, just something to think about.
Lauren, could you pull up the plan page again? And it, this is perhaps because this is also a comment from Michelle James and the F cubed organization. They might, I don't know if you want to offer any thoughts on intention? Or where you, maybe you might, I guess what I read is like, you might see a gap in this list and maybe you could better explain what you think the gap is.
In terms of the fine dent, fine?
Fine grained visual diversity that reduces sameness.
Right. So, so again, this is terminology that's used, um, in lots of places to describe what makes a downtown area or a, you know, a historic neighborhood. What makes it likable? What makes us, what, what attracts us to it? And that fine grain density is, is a very common term that's used for creating that idea of community character. And so, you know, what I, what I'm getting at with this is let's have, let's have more than what the zoning code says. Or is it the zoning code or the, excuse me, the design standards, architectural design standards? In the same zoning code, right? So, so add this for another way to create a sense of place and community character. And it's, and it's a very common thing that's talked about in lots of cities.
You're talking about extending the standards? Having, allowing for more standards on, on?
Well, I, I was thinking it could be added to this, um, best practices. And then the zoning code could be looked at to see if it actually covers that. I think what Tiffany said in terms of what it means to me is more diversity. More diversity than you're getting now with the, with the design standards we have presently. Excuse me. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Norton?
I know on the regional plan retreat, when there was an extensive discussion of sense of place and what a sense of place and where is sense of place? I mean, if we're talking sense of place, are we talking just downtown? Are we talking in these, you know, entry corridors to the, to the city? Where would this apply? Is this citywide? Is it just?
All policies of the regional plan apply citywide. And all guidelines and best practices would be something we'd work to incorporate in a citywide standpoint, unless we were looking to interpret them for a specific plan area or a neighborhood plan.
Okay, so keeping.
Yeah, some, some do reference like historic districts, but there's historic districts. I know people think of downtown, but we have historic landmarks and districts throughout the community. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Ready for thumbs up or thumbs down? All right. Thumbs up or down? We have one thumbs, like one thumbs up, five thumbs down and me as abstained, I guess.
Go neutral. Okay. So four left to go on three dash nine. This one is ensure, is add a new best practice that states ensuring transit access connectivity with adjacent neighborhoods in a comfortable pedestrian environment that provides shade and shade trees. The first two elements of this proposal are covered in other goals and policies. So if staff doesn't recommend adding them here, they, repetition leads to conflicting language. That's what we learned from the current plan. So if you have to say it two ways in two places, staff will be wondering which one should apply. And that's, that's something we're trying to pull away from. But there, and Tiffany I know has been working on trees and tree work, tree and landscaping within the city. Shade and shade trees are not covered anywhere in the plan. So that could be broken out. But please remember that there's a consideration that trees and shade are great in the summer and in the winter they are icy. So it's not, shade everywhere is not the best answer in all of Flagstaff, nor is trees everywhere from a fire perspective. Do you want to add anything to that?
I just want to add, because you've not heard anything about the code analysis project, that one of the lesser talked about components of the code analysis project is a combined effort with Mountain Line to see how to amend our code to make development more transit friendly. We've had less details to work through on that, but all of those provisions are specifically included in the code update currently.
So as, as someone who hasn't had an accident because of trees in the winter making the roads real icy, yeah, I understand the whole generalization about that. But I think that your point of saying this is mentioned elsewhere in the plan and that this is different language and the language, you know, that staff would, it would be hard to interpret. So are we ready for a thumbs up, thumbs down? I think that's a unanimous thumbs down.
And does that include the proposed, staff proposed alternative that's in the far left of having, of just trying to retain the shade idea? Just thumbs down on all three ideas being added to the best practices. Okay. I saw head nods. Okay. So the, the next best practice suggestion was to add a new best practice that says providing mixed use with a concentration of mixing, missing middle housing and types and commercial. This is covered in other goals and policies again. And while it does create a sense of place, this is not the only place we talk about those things. So.
Okay. Questions or ready for thumbs up, thumbs down? So. I, I mentioned a break. Everybody's ready to, oh.
I know, we're just.
I mean, that's why we're doing it quickly.
Yeah, I'm trying.
I just want to.
No, I'm sorry.
Not that we're being negative, but I think I'm struggling with, you know, what are these, are these all? Do they really contribute to sense of place? I mean, yes, we support transit. Yes, you know, but I mean, is that really defined sense of place? So that's.
Right, but. So the, I think you have two more to go. That's it. Okay. And then break. So the next one is adding a new best practice, providing a variety of differently sized public and private social spaces such as public squares where people can congregate, socialize, rest, people watch and enjoy life, which is a good thought. One thing is, is if we were talking about really small infill, like half acre lots or something like that, that might be, this might be difficult to consider or, and we also can't require necessarily that people provide access to the public to their private land all the time. That gets really tricky and we've, we've struggled with that when we have the aggressive civic space requirements in the code. So that, this one is, it's, yes, we agree with it in principle, but like applying it with a plan amendment or a zoning case could be difficult.
All right. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, on this one, this is actually what I would consider absolutely sense of place. And if we don't envision it, we don't get it. So I'm going to be a yes on this one.
I have a question. So best practices aren't thou shouts. These are what we want. So we're not requiring this on every project. We're just hoping it might happen, right?
Right, right. It's a good idea. That's what I'd say the best practices are. And the way the language about introducing them is written, it's saying, and you should talk to experts if you need help interpreting them.
We ready for thumbs up, thumbs down? All right, let's vote. We've got six thumbs up and one thumbs down. Do we have anywhere in this about, you know, doggy bag disposals in neighborhoods? Maybe that's my comment.
Trash pickup.
We, we need doggy bag trash things in neighborhoods so people have places to put their doggy bags.
Can, can then you also add a provision that it be, the staff be funded to clean those?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be great? Or, you know, how much do those cost? I mean, but you know, a sense of place is.
That it's clean.
Some, some places clean and you don't have doggy bags being left on the road.
But I do, I say that in jest, but I do, you know, you've already voted this up, but those are some of the challenges of public spaces that don't have someone who is, there's not. Or somebody legally responsible for. And if we don't staff appropriately, those places don't become a nice sense of place.
Thank you.
So the last item on page three dash nine is not about the best practices. It's about adding a new policy under development patterns. If you'd like to take a break before we talk about that one, we could come back to it.
Is this the one that's on the open spaces letter?
Yes, it's in the open space commission.
I think we should take a break before we delve into.
All right. So it is about 6:40. How about we come back at seven?
Oh, dinner and bathroom or?
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Full break.
Is that enough time for you all? Yeah. Is that too much time? How about 15 minutes?
Okay.
Seven.
Take a walk.
Six.
Sit back down.
Fifty-five.
Fifteen minutes.
All right. Oh, so we're back at really loud volume. So I'll talk really quietly. Are people still on with us online? Wow, there's a lot of people online. I don't blame them.
During the break, staff ordered things so that we could start like working from chapter one down. There's really only one like overarching one. And this was from Commissioner Sharp last time of instead of having the core and complementary priorities, change the language. So all six were equally weighted. You didn't, you put it on the list, but didn't.
Okay, before we start that, yeah. Commissioner Lukey would like to make a statement.
I just have one comment about the sense of place because one of the things that I know we can't do anything about because it's private ownership of land. But when I look at Forest Street, all the way from Route 66 to Cedar, I just see so much potential. You have that whole land swath of privately owned land. But if there was some way to come up with some kind of architectural idea, you know, maybe it's NAU or something. And I know this is way out there and it's kind of crazy. But it just every time I drive down, I just, I can envision a multi-story.
A hospital there.
No, not a hospital.
In the middle of town.
Don't get me in trouble. But, but you know, we've been talking about mixed use and, and transportation being adjacent. And that whole area is a, is a place to me that could be created. So that's all I want to say. I'd, I would love to see that all planned as one piece with roads going all the way from one side to the other.
So Commissioner Lukey, that, that is something the city has attempted to do four times in the last 20 years unsuccessfully. But Lauren Clementino, our senior planner for neighborhood planning, will be picking the torch up and trying it again. So I mean, I don't think it's because no one's thought of that. I think it's because we have tried and failed repeatedly to find the right compromise. And some of that is timing and some of that is, you know, people, the people associated with the place change their opinions over time, too. So I would leave that on the side. It's not really relevant to tonight's discussion.
All right. So we're, so we are not going to do 3.9 first. We're going to do this first.
Yeah, let's start working through in page order.
Okay.
So this, this first item is number 64 on the list, what the way it was originally organized in the packet. And it came from Commissioner Sharp to maybe consider whether we want to change how the core and complementary priority structure. That's kind of, I mean, it is a big deal, but it's not impossible to change. But you did not have time at the last meeting to discuss this. It was sort of brought to the attention at the end. And so staff decided we don't have a recommendation on this.
Do you want to talk about this, Commissioner Sharp?
I, I will. So I understand the city has declared two emergencies and I understand why based upon that you've identified two core and four complementary. But as I was reading through this, I kept thinking that's not the role of a plan in my mind. Yes, according to the city, these are emergencies. Let's address them. But I think as a long-term planning document, we should not forsake the other four for the sake of the two. I think they all work together. They're all essential for the well-being of the city. And I noticed this comment was a common thread in several of the public comments. And I believe Open Space and others brought it up, too. So I'd rather see all six be completely equal. And then the way I propose it in there is maybe you could say all six are equal. But if something came through, you got to make sure three come together and then the other three aren't harmed. So there's a way to weight it. And I think in the end, you're probably going to always find housing is always going to be there no matter what. So that's my general thought on it.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Norton?
See my wheels turning, huh? I, I appreciate this comment. And yes, we, we have talked about this like on open spaces and I've seen other people talk about it. And as far as like a plan, I think there's some of the suggestions that are coming up start to mitigate or soften this more intensive look at those two core priorities. As much as I'd like to see maybe the six priorities have equal weight, I still am worried about how does it, how do we make that happen? Is that something that's even feasible? Will it be well received by county and, and city? So that's, that's my hesitation in, in throwing my complete support behind this. Can you talk about like, I think I mentioned, obviously, there's a lot of work in the, that's been done on the way the plan is written as is. How much of an overhaul would that be? Can you still keep the timeline of approvals and going to the voters? If something that I perceive as a major rewrite or amendment of the plan as is. And maybe, maybe it's more work that I'm foreseeing than, than you're foreseeing since your stance has softened a little bit.
So I mean, I think we looked at the document because you asked that question at the September 10th meeting. And there's three pages that we would have to change. We'd have to change one dash 12, two dash four, and three dash one. My one, my one hesitation is staff is that if we went with the all six are equally weighted and you could pick any three, I think people would pick, would not pick carbon neutrality and housing attainability as often as staff, as we might want them to because they're the harder ones to further and achieve. So it could, it could accidentally emphasize utilities, like the resilient public services and facilities and the mixed-use neighborhood. Like I don't, I don't know how that would play out. I mean, I don't have like a count in my head of how that would play out, but the unintentional consequence could be that it, it might de-emphasize those two things. So just a thought to add to the conversation. But we don't have, we, you know, this is a framework we make up as a city. Every city does this framework differently. And we're trying to find an innovative way that does it for the community and moves the big things forward and sticks to the intent of the statute, but gives us some flexibility. So it's a staff proposal and the commission and council can weigh in on it.
Can you like address how it would potentially change finding conformance? I mean, right now you've got two core and four complementary. If you changed it, we're six across. How does that, how does that change when somebody has to find conformance with regional plan and where they find conformance? And how much they have to conform to it?
As the goals and policies only apply when a plan amendment is being considered, I don't, I don't think it changes a whole lot other than, would you have any thoughts on that, Michelle?
I think to me, the most important thing is that we make it clear that it's not all six that have to be moved forward. I liked Commissioner Sharp's idea of like, it's three and then the other three can't be harmed. That's very in line with state statute. And that's why we went with the language on, you know, looking at the two being core. So right now it's the two are the core, four are the complementary, and you move one core and at least one complementary. So to me, that's the major important part because one of the challenges we have with the existing plan is we have a lot of goals and policies. And it's not clear how to prioritize those. And so the expectation is that everything is met. And I will, a lot of you are very intelligent people who have done a lot of work in this field. And you know, no project is going to move all those goals and policies and we shouldn't expect them to. So I think as long as it, we stay with the either two or three, and I'd be really hesitant to say more than the three, as long as we do no harm to the other three, I think that that's kind of in the realm and and easy with, stays in line with the conformance and how we were thinking about it.
Yeah, it's not a wholesale change. We just have to change the text on those three pages and then maybe move some headings, but everything else could continue to apply.
So my question goes back to you had a lot of people working on this. And it was under the pretext that there were those two core priorities and not six core priorities or six priorities. Would there have been a feedback on that when you were going through adopting the plan itself with the people working on it? Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I don't know if I can speak to that. I mean, the core, the choice of the core priorities, I know the emergency was part of it, but it was also that as the majority of public comments heavily emphasized those two priorities. You know, when we sent out a survey and we said, how would you prioritize these six things? Those were the two that came out on top. So it's not just the emergency. I know that's one of the rationales and I know people picked up on that, but it's more than that, too.
I would agree with everything Sarah just said, and I would only add that I think that, you know, my recollection of all the steering committee meetings and Sarah, please correct me if I, if I misspeak, but that exactly as Sarah said, the six priorities were identified through the survey and through public feedback. But as people were writing the goals and policies, they really weren't focused on those two sustainability and climate and housing attainability being the core. I mean, they were overarching, but so were the other four priorities. And really that it was after the retreat with council. I think at that point, it had still been just presented as having six kind of core. because council kind of was like, well, if you have priorities, how do you prioritize the priorities? And so we were kind of asked to, to kind of build that framework in a more specific way.
If I could add, I, I think for me, the fatal flaw in how it's written is that the two are non-negotiable. You know, that, that's not how you compromise. That's not how you move good ideas forward. It's better to say, all of these are important to us. Yeah, these are probably more important to us, but to say we'll never negotiate on those, I think that is bad.
Yeah, and there are other comments to that effect, um, in chapter three, a little later down. And it could be that we, you know, if you thumbs down this one, I still think you may want to make changes to that language on 3-1, which would be the next thing to talk about.
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah, no, I remember at the, um, county and city retreat that we all attended on, on May, whatever that was, second. Um, and I think that was probably the first time you introduced the graphic of the universe and the two core and the four complementary. And no one flinched. No one said, wait a minute, we should have all six. So I kind of think we'd get a little bit of pushback because that would have been the time to, for someone to say, I'm not comfortable with this. And I do think, and I know in the open spaces letter as well as some of the others, that, um, you know, there's ways to soften this a little bit and maybe achieve what we're kind of talking about, especially that non-negotiable word. So, but you know, I would, yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would be voting no on this one, but only because I know there's other things coming that I think will help, help soften it.
I would agree. I think the problem is the word non-negotiable. I think if there's some softening in that and saying that these are the top two priorities, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, there's, like Ian's saying, it's just not absolute. The way non-negotiable sounds pretty nasty to me, but.
Are we ready for a thumbs up or thumbs down? Or would you rather go look at the other ones first and come back to this? Thumbs up, thumbs down? So we're three or five for changing that and two for not.
The next one is that, um, is kind of a part that goes both to chapter three as a whole and also some pieces of chapter 10, um, which is revising the plan to remove away from abandonment of natural gas and instead strive to maintain two energy sources to maintain resilience, redundancy, and affordability. I know Jenny Nieman from Sustainability is here to maybe answer some questions. I know there was some public comment on this and I, I really, it kind of bothers me. So I need to like make a clear statement. There was a statement that people's natural gas can provide heating in an emergency, which is not actually true in most people's HVAC systems because your blower is electric. So your pilot light might be on, but none of that air is actually moving through the vents in your house when the electricity is out. The only, and, and this is my public service announcement as someone who's had a lot of safety trainings in cold weather environments as a former Forest Service employee, is the only safe source is a separate propane heater that can be used in an emergency. And so I just encourage everyone to have a separate propane heater in case of winter emergency. Your, your natural gas heater will not work in your house. And I, I just want people to know that because I feel like that, that's been said a bunch of times.
But my understanding is that the newer units do have something that can bypass that and.
Yes, if you have a very, if you have a very new unit.
Right, if you have a new unit, it can, um, it can trip that heater to work. But that's only in the last year or so or two that those units have been available. Is that correct?
It's a pretty limited time, given, given the age of buildings and how long a natural gas heater lasts. I just don't want people to think that that will work.
Right, and I, I know for us, we have a natural gas heater. We purchased a, a, what do you call it? A portable that.
Like a heater, a small space heater?
No, not a heater, but a portable.
Generator.
Generator that works off of propane. So we purchased that in case the electricity goes off because we don't have a, a separate, I mean, you know, source of, of heat. So, yeah, and, and my recollection is that new gas fireplaces also have that switch where it can blow and still create heat, um, in, in case of emergencies. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I've used my gas fireplace exactly like that. We, we had a prolonged power outage a few years ago. Gas fireplace kept us warm, so it, it does exist. But I understand your point. It's not that a gas furnace is the end-all be-all. But that's not the, the genesis for why I make this argument. Um, and, and again, several others in the public made this argument. It's that you, by doing this, are taking away one utility from the public, which just increased costs. We've already seen it with people submitting applications to us telling us data centers are driving prices up. Electrical demand has gone up, the grid's not ready, those kinds of arguments. And then I think back, I think it was last week or so, Governor Hobbs signed this recent executive order, emphasizing energy affordability and resilience. And yes, her executive order was not dedicated to natural gas per se, but she's looking at ways to reduce costs by expanding energy sources. So by artificially saying, well, you cannot use natural gas because it doesn't meet this goal over here, you're not achieving other goals. And so, so I would strongly support, I, I, I would like us to just not pull natural gas out of our ability to use up here. I, I think it's, it's an important resource and if we get rid of it, you're going to have unintended consequences.
And then I want to add to that, that for affordability for lower-income homes or, uh, lower-income people, natural gas is much more affordable and much more sustainable for them in the long run. And if you have people who are elderly, people who are low income and they can't afford their electric bill, they're not going to run their, their heater. So we're going to have a problem with that. And I think I stated this well back a year ago about how I felt about that all, all-electric homes, that they're, they're not sustainable for lower-income and, uh, people, elderly people.
Chairman, you know, uh, may I respond with just two points of clarification? Hi folks, Jenny Nieman, Climate Action Section Director. I believe last time you saw me, I was on the screen with my child. Good to see you all here tonight in person. Um, just two points of clarification. Um, so the plan does not talk about abandoning natural gas. Um, the plan doesn't, I, I've, I just went through every single instance. And so we do talk about home electrification and we talk about beneficial electrification when it benefits our community members. We legally cannot prohibit the installation of natural gas. We also aren't interested in that. What we are interested in is helping people have options for how they build their homes, for having options for how they heat their homes and not precluding one or the other. We legally cannot do that. And I, I would love to, if there are areas in the plan that talk about that, that you all think are too negative for natural gas, I'd love to bring it up because I, I, we want to solve that. We talk about electrification, we talk about fuel switching. There's a couple of reasons for that. The studies show that it actually does not cost more to heat your home with electricity. Electricity is more expensive on a per-unit basis than gas. But electric appliances are about four times more efficient than gas appliances. So what we have found in studies, as well as other agencies have found in many studies with similar climates, is that it's about cost neutral for folks. It depends on your electricity plan, it depends on the time of use, all kinds of things. But for the most part, um, the studies are finding that it's about cost neutral. Heating your home with electricity or heating your home with, with natural gas. Much of that is due to, um, a huge change in what are called cold climate heat pumps, which are heat pumps that we use across the United States, but are made for very cold climates. The like incredible increases in efficiency in those cold climate heat pumps mean they can now work in Flagstaff. They can work to about negative 30 degrees. And they can work well and efficiently and affordably. So there has been a really big technology shift in the last decade about to have made these available and not super expensive. Um, and so everything we're seeing actually says, it's actually pretty cost neutral for that. So I just wanted to offer up those two clarifications. I'm happy to talk about where we talk negatively about it. We do talk about electrification, um, but we don't say everything needs to be electric. We don't say, um, we're banning natural gas. We don't say any of those things. Again, um, we cannot do that, Flagstaff cannot, in the state of Arizona. And, and again, we're just not interested in that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I, I think I agree with everything you said. But as I was going through the plan, I noticed, yes, it doesn't forbid natural gas. But again, we've seen time and time again, where rezoning cases come before us and they brag about, we are a full electric, we're non-natural gas. So it's not that the city has said you can't use natural gas, but it's wink, wink, nod, nod, don't use it. It's more of an encouragement. We're going to encourage you to go full electric. And, and so the problem again is you're getting rid of one source of energy in a time where electricity, electricity prices are going up. And so, yes, the, the efficiency may be the same. It's just, it's going to be even more expensive. If, if we make policies and goals that get rid of one reliable source of energy to the favor of the other, electricity is just going to get more expensive. I, I think there's just no way around that.
Yeah, I mean, all energy is expected to increase. We're seeing increases in the natural gas market as well. Right, and there's also a ton of uncertainty about it as well. Completely understand what you're saying about sources. I think, you know, we're not saying we're going to not have Flagstaff have natural gas, right? I think it is a conversation on a building-by-building basis. I will tell you from a resilience perspective, we try to think about community spaces, right? We try to think about community warming centers. We set up community warming centers when there are outages. The home-by-home is not necessarily the level to think about at that resilience and emergency perspective, that the city and the county at least think about it, um, but certainly understand the comment.
And I was just trying to find the language on page where it says, making the change would make the proposed out-of-policy alignment with the carbon neutrality pan, plan, page 97. Is that page 97 of this or page 97?
It's of the carbon neutrality plan. There is explicit policy on page 97 of the carbon neutrality plan that talks about electrification in a way that's more specific than the regional plan. So I think there's some, you know, the language we have in the plan in chapter three and 10 now is in alignment with that other policy. So they would be diverging a little if we made an emphasis on natural gas part of the energy chapter.
So what is the, um, I guess?
I can try and find.
Carbon neutrality, page seven, or 97, I'd be interested in what it says.
So we have, um, it's, it's in our fuel switching, uh, target areas of chapter. Um, and essentially we say, you know, encourage electrification of municipal buildings, of existing buildings and of new buildings. Those are the, those are the general policies.
So then to be in compliance with that, that means we're discouraging natural gas, correct?
I don't think that the city discourages any energy use. I don't, that's not our job. Do we encourage it? Absolutely.
I guess if you're going to encourage electricity, you're discouraging natural gas. I, I don't see any way around it.
I think it's an interesting thing. I think that this plan encourages a lot of things. And I think like, do we discourage everything that we don't mention? I, I think that that probably takes the plan a little bit further than its intent.
Commissioner Mar?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I think when I, when I'm hearing this discussion, ultimately, we understand that there are policy decisions that have been made and have been pre-established by council. And, and ultimately, you know, I don't think that this discussion really helps to move anything forward, understanding that when, when the commission makes this recommendation one way or another, if it's counter to pre-established, um, council policy or, or directive, then it's not going to be something that the council will ultimately approve, whether we disagree with it or not. I, I do think that just in the interest of time, we do need to, we should sort of move this process forward.
So are we ready for a thumbs up, thumbs down? All right, thumbs up and thumbs down. We have six thumbs up, one thumbs down.
Yeah, I don't think we have. And Jenny and I were just talking. I think one challenge with voting this up is we're not sure we have specificity to know where you want these changes or what you want added. So, I mean, you can leave it vague and then council will have to give us direction on what to add, which may end up where it ends up.
I think that would be the fairest way to do it, just out of fairness to other commenters who aren't here to support their own comments as well.
So just put, I will just put after the vote, say, um, the commission asks council to consider specific language changes they may want in order to implement this condition. We'll just kick it to council.
Okay, do we want page numbers, though?
I, I don't have page numbers right now. We'll have to do that another time.
Okay.
Because I don't know if they're going to want to add things or take things out. It's hard to tell. So then moving on to chapter three, the first page, which I think is where there's several comments. I don't know, can we pull up 3-1, please? It says, under core priorities, revise the second sentence to say, make up the declared objective that define. And I think, I can't remember if this is in need of the non-negotiables. I know Lauren's trying to switch right now.
Add in, yes, this is where the replacement of the word non-negotiable was being recommended. Open Space came up with one suggestion.
There was another one.
The citizen had another suggestion. But this is where the non-negotiable, um, and I think other people had, had it in, in public comment as well.
Right, so Nat said principal themes of this regional plan instead of non-negotiable. And then I'm looking at the open space. What was the words that open space used?
Declared.
Just change non-negotiable to declared. We did remove the word themes throughout the document because we did have themes in the draft plan. So I think that staff would not favor that language over some changing the modifier to the word objectives because it introduces a whole new concept that doesn't exist anywhere else in the document at this point.
So if you talked about declared objectives, would that work? I'm trying to see where this.
Staff had no recommended change to that if we wanted to carry it forward.
Okay, so we're. I'm just trying to see where it is right here.
It's in that, um, core priorities paragraph and it's the second sentence. So it just is replacing the word.
Instead of non-negotiable.
It would be declared objective.
Yeah, it would just, it would change the sentence to, together, they make up the declared objectives that define success and serve as the key drivers to align with the vision. But please note that if your recommendation of getting rid of core and complementary priorities is accepted, that this would go away. You're right now editing something you just voted to get rid of. Just, you know.
So, but if, if council doesn't agree with that, then I think that, I think non-negotiable is not a great term. I don't know if declared is a great term, but, um, he, well, no, he, they didn't like that because this was about principal themes of the regional plan. So that there's no principal themes, they got rid of that, so.
You could say principal objectives, if you like.
Also, open spaces. Open spaces has some.
This is very wordsmithy, so just pick a word. That's what staff would recommend or delete it.
Open Space has some, um, additional suggestions in there, why it matters. Section, the words that were discussed besides declared were balanced, balanced objectives, primary objectives, important objectives, other, just other word choices.
Do we need that word at all?
So it could just say they make up the objectives. So it could just say they make up the objectives and take non-negotiable out.
Correct.
That I would agree to. Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up? Just take out non-negotiable. Yep. We were 100% in agreement.
So then the next one is, is then we don't need to talk about that one because we just did, so we can skip. I forgot what number this was. Twenty, the unnumbered one. Okay, so 22 is under core priorities, add a new sentence after the first two. Implying core priorities, the city will co-optimize housing and climate outcomes with open space trails, community integration. I consider this sentence, I know the Open Space Commission put a lot of thought into it, but I think it is covered elsewhere and that the intent as written is fine. This is an example of where laundry lists again are limiting and misinterpretable. So this is not, this would not have met my writing standards for the document. I'll say that. Like, I wouldn't have accepted this sentence from a staff person either. Sorry, guys. They know I was a very harsh editor. But it's true because this is just a list and what does it do? And why is it repainting things that are in the goals and policies? And it does not add value to an explanatory part. In fact, I think it mixes in goals, policies and values with an explanation of how to use the plan. This, it just, it's one of those sentences, we would get caught on it 100 times and it would never help us.
So, so we're looking at the one that Nat White did in person. Is that right?
No, skip that one.
We skipped that one, okay.
Yeah, no, we're looking at 22. The one that says, it's from the Open Space Commission. It says, under core priorities, add a new sentence that offers, after the first two, about applying core priorities, says, the city will co-optimize housing and climate outcomes with open space trails, community integration, equity, health, health forward and balanced neighborhoods. This introduces a whole bunch of new words and modifiers that are used nowhere else in the plan. It is a value statement in a paragraph that is about how you apply the plan. It's just not appropriate, given how we have edited and managed the rest of the document. And as I said, staff would foresee that people, what happened with some previous cases, which people take intent language and they trot it out and try and compete it with goals and policies. All of these things are covered in goals and policies. Staff just doesn't feel this is necessary.
So Commissioner Norton has a statement.
Yeah, so this, this is where I was talking about where the softening of those two priorities can be made. And that was really the intent behind open spaces by adding this in is that you have those two core priorities, but you also need to co-optimize some of these other priorities in, when you're considering housing and climate outcomes. So this is where, when I mentioned softening, this is, and Robert might want to, or some, some of the other open space people might want to chime in here, but that's why this was placed there. Because this paragraph became such a black and white. If it's not housing and climate, then it just doesn't matter.
Well, let me say this. I, as someone who's had to hold a firm line on a lot of the writing in the plan, dislike this sentence intensely. Mainly because it introduces a bunch of terms that I don't know how to define. I mean, if you, you guys saw how many comments we've gotten on the glossary. This makes me hurt in that way because I think that it is, what does health forward mean? I have no idea. It, I think if you want this to mean co-optimize, you need to, it needs, the sentence needs to use the exact words of all the other priorities and not introduce new terms, if that was the intent. Because that, this really is a spinner.
And you might want to also look at the next one because there were three parts of this paragraph that Open Spaces wanted to, to change. And if this one doesn't pass or this becomes too confusing and contentious, then maybe the next suggestion made by the commission might serve that.
I think that the, so we want to talk about these together, that's fine. The staff comment on the next one is that it says this in chapter two, so this is a repeat statement. There's a warm fuzzy desire to see us say everything exactly where you're reading at the moment. I get that. But again, it's a, if we word it differently here than it's worded in chapter two, which one regulates? So.
So do we want to take a vote on the 23? Can you put that back up?
Yeah, this would add to the end of.
Are we looking at?
Sorry, actually, can we look at the paragraph? I'll read it to you, but it, it doesn't make, the little snippet here won't make sense without the context. So the, after the last sentence, the final sentence to say should address, so it's, so this is the sentence that ends with the core and complimentary priorities work together by creating, I'm sorry. Wrong period. When a goal, analysis of goals and policies are required, analysis of regional plan conformance should address their conformance with core priorities. It's, it's, says to change it to should address their conformance with core and complimentary priorities. Staff recommends just deleting the last sentence. That's our recommendation. It says this in chapter two. This is an example where staff repeated without intending to. Maybe somebody just thought the paragraph was too short. But we would just delete that sentence. That would be the staff recommendation.
Madam Chair, I just have a comment, you know, just to support what Sarah's saying. Having been on the other side, applying for comprehensive plan amendments, major ones, both in city, both in municipalities and counties. These words do matter because when things get confusing, you can't interpret them. You, I had to process a major amendment over language and it was expensive. Cost of my project went way up. So I would lean more toward what staff is trying to do because there are instances where good intent, you want to soften things, you want to do other things. But legally, when you get into this stuff, it can get very dicey.
Okay, so we're looking at, can we go back to the priority list or the? Not the priority list.
Yes, going back to the spreadsheet.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, now, now it makes sense. I just couldn't explain what our staff suggestion was without you seeing it.
And so, do we want to vote on the two?
22 or 23?
22 and then 23. Are we ready to vote on those two? We can bring them up. They're there, they're not here yet on my screen. Okay, there we go. So 22, do we want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down on 22? Let's do thumbs up, thumbs down. We have two thumbs up and five thumbs down. And then on 23, would it just be eliminating that last sentence?
That is, that's the staff recommendation, not the Open Space Commission recommendation. Staff recommendation is delete the last sentence in that paragraph.
And, and that's because that was covered in chapter two, is it?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Accidental repetition.
So.
On 23, we had add, we just added the word complimentary into the sentence as it is. It was just a word addition.
That's the, yeah, that's the Open Space proposal, but when staff went and looked at it, we find that whole sentence to be unnecessary.
So do we want to look at the sentence or look at what Open Space suggested? How do we do that? Are you in, let's say, are you in favor of staff eliminating the last, deleting the last sentence of that paragraph? Thumbs up? We have five thumbs up, one thumb down and one neutral. So I think that answers the question of adding that word. We'll just delete the sentence. So we can go on to 24?
Yep, this one's on 3-10, sorry that it's a, it's not on 3-2, it's actually number 26. This is a recommendation from the commission. We went over this language with the parks, open space and recreation staff. This is fine. If you want to have us change this, we can do that.
Well.
Do you want to see the original language?
Yeah, because my 10-minute walk might be more time, more, I mean, you're, you're talking about, how do you, how do you sustain 10 minutes? It, it depends on whether you're a young child, an older person. I, I can see somebody in my neighborhood that could not get to most places within 10 minutes.
Right, and I know we're flipping over to now. And I think that is exactly why we, let's see, this was pros one. We did not specify a distance here. It's the guidelines under the land use categories that discuss the distance. So 10-minute is highly interpretable and not something we can easily tell from a site plan. But it is a policy for a lot of parks and so an open space management. And so it's not a problem, but it would not override the more specific actual distances that we have in the guidelines. Those are meant to be about a 10-minute walk by estimates, but it's too hard to interpret that when you're just reviewing a site plan in some cases. We don't always get that level of detail.
So do we want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down?
I think it would be worth having Robert from Open Space talk about 10-minute walk versus, you know, where we also had talked about half mile, a third of a mile and how used in different, different avenues. I think that would help us.
Well, I mean, I think that, let me just say, and I do want to hear what Robert is saying about it, but the, the, the planning staff feels that in a policy, the 10-minute walk thing is no problem. In a guideline, it's more of a problem. So we're only talking about this policy here. So maybe that other question might be better addressed when we get to where we talk about guidelines. But Robert can speak now if you want. I just wanted to clarify that.
But if, if we're going to consider it in guidelines, wouldn't it be best to have that answer now? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, Robert Wallace, this is our Open Space section. And yes, they, when the commission, the Open Space Commission was discussing this, they talked about adding the 10-minute walking access standard because it's a widely adopted national benchmark for equitable access to open space and to parks. And it is defined later on as a benchmark on page 4-26. And it talks a little bit more about the quarter mile to a third of a mile. But the commission was feeling that it was important to embed, embed it in this to help clarify that there's an effort for planning and ensuring infill to help meet that 10-minute access walking, walking time. So this is a goal for Parks and Recreation to provide walking access for all residents, to access to a park or open space within 10 minutes.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready for a thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. Let's. Okay, we have three, four, five thumbs up, one thumbs down and one neutral.
So the next one, number 28, planning staff does not support. This is another one of those ones where it's like, oh, here's a list and it looks friendly and helpful, but it's actually harmful when it gets interpreted as being restrictive. And that's why, again, land use planning, the writing is very different than strategic planning. So this, this could, number 28, could be harmful if, say, the Forest Service gets folded into some other agency.
So, and I will, I will talk to that because back when I started working in volunteer services, we were funded by the federal agency action. Action got rolled into the Corporation for National Service. About two years ago, the Corporation for National Service changed their name to AmeriCorps. You see where that happens. So I, I agree with you on that statement. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Norton?
Yeah, I can add to that. You know, the intent here was, is that some that read the original plan, particularly like developers, they don't realize all the inter-agency groups that may need to be consulted, which is why we used a, the commission used, for example, it was not an exhaustive list at all. So that was the, the intent is to just bring awareness of how many agencies often have to be consulted.
In practice, that's not true. Usually, a property owner might only have to consult with one agency, if any at all. And it's the exception, not the rule, that that's the case. You have to kind of be in a right situation. So there's always staff providing comments on applications and that's the right place to provide that level of detail. It's not here.
Are we ready for thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. So we have one thumbs up and the rest thumbs down.
3-14 is adding the 10-minute walking access standard to, to Policy OS dot two. This is just in parallel with the PROS one. I think staff's only comment would be not to capitalize walking access standard and word it similarly to the other one. It's worded a little differently. Because it says, the PROS dot one says, within a 10-minute walk. I think we'd rather see language like that than to be referencing a standard in a policy. That's weird. That's a misalignment of what that is. So it could say something like focus on the purchase, blah, blah, blah. Well, actually, this one's really a little bit hard because of the way it's worded. That support compact housing, climate action and a 10-minute walk to open space or something like that. But the walking access standard, you don't usually reference a standard in a policy.
Any comments, questions? Thumbs up, thumbs down? We've got one thumbs up and the rest thumbs down.
So that's a thumbs down to the original wording or even adjusting the wording for a 10-minute walk, just for clarification?
I was, well, wait a minute, you were voting on the original wording that you wanted a thumbs down for the original or that?
Do you want to modify it? If you voted down the original wording, do you want to propose it in a modified way?
Yes, so how would it be worded?
I think it would just say at the end, and to support a 10-minute walk to open space. There we go.
Want to make sure that we're understanding. So there was an addition to the end of that sentence and then there was an extra word. Dedication was added in. So I feel like we're voting on the whole sentence, but the sentence is there, the Open Spaces just wanted to add on to it. I just want to make sure.
Does it say 10-minute walking access standard? Oh, sorry. I think because you changed it further up, we wanted to change it here too. Sorry. But yeah, adding dedication, that's fine.
So, this is odd. I don't know if I'm just, maybe the page number is on, do they switch sides? Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
You know, why did they do that? Switch sides of where the page is numbered?
Because that's how it looks when you open it in a book.
Okay. Instead of flipping through pages, it's just, you're looking at it as a. Instead of flipping through pages, it's just, you're looking at it as a book style.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So do we want to vote on that? Change to say it would just say, and to support a 10 minute walk to open space? That's what we're voting on. We're nullifying our last vote and we're just voting on this to add to add the, to support a 10 minute walk to open space.
Yep.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? We've got three, four thumbs down and three thumbs up.
Okay.
So it's a thumbs down.
All right, then we're moving on to, it's number 57, but we're talking about page three dash four, which is parking. So this one is basically taking out four words from a parking policy. The policy currently reads pursue year round, on street, public parking and related operation maintenance to support reductions in private parking and promote affordability. And Commissioner Norton recommended taking out year round, on street. I guess a, a staff wanted to make sure people understood that the language year round and on street was to support reconsideration of the winter parking ordinance, which we have one of the most restrictive winter parking ordinances in the country. It specifically was written for that. I've not, I do not know the consequence of broadening that language. Staff would need a lot of time to talk that through.
The consequence of what?
Of taking out the words year round, on street. It would it doesn't read anymore as the way it is currently written is the policy is supposed to support us looking at our management policies about on-street parking. The way this reads, I might interpret it as go get more parking garages. So it just completely changes the meaning in a way that I'm not sure we fully understand how that could be interpreted in the future.
Mary, do you want to make any?
Yeah, I don't know what your intent is.
I just, you know, the discussion is still ongoing on what is the solution to the parking issue, and I just felt that this became too specific and too narrow. We're saying in our regional plan, we're, we're going year round and we're on street where that hasn't been decided yet, you know? So I just thought it, we should just delete year round and on-street to allow flexible considerations.
And Commissioner Norton, council has had work sessions on this and provided direction to staff on it, that they want us to head in that direction and hence that's reflected.
Yeah, but it hasn't, it hasn't been put into policy or code yet. I mean, and we've made other, we've looked at other things and we go, oh, we can't do that because it's not been finalized yet or you know, it hasn't been adopted, it hasn't been approved. Well, but then you're asking that this be put in before it's been approved. So I just wanted to kind of play devil's advocate with both sides there.
Commissioner Lukey?
I have to agree with Commissioner Norton on this one because I do feel like there are different parts of the city that need different policies. It's not a one size fits all, so.
All right, do, are we ready for thumbs up, thumbs down, or does anybody have another comment?
I, I would add, what if we just put it as you've got a Commissioner Norton, but then include maybe some parenthetical statement that says on-street public parking. I, I guess the way it's written here, it's eliminating public parking, it's totally changing the, the meaning here. So I can understand why it would be understood as let's build parking garages. It is a totally different statement.
So saying, what if you remove the word public? Just let's have it say pursue parking and related operations?
No, not get rid of public, but maybe include something that would encourage year round, on-street parking. I guess I'm going back to the original statements where I'm going with that.
I don't know if you mind me adding in here, but the idea of public parking, why it lends me towards a different place is usually I think of public parking as more towards filling a need for tourism, for, as an attraction for downtown kind of a thing, which is really, they're, they're just two different totally topics. I think we're looking at on-street parking as being a substitute for development, providing onsite parking. And yes, I understand different areas have to be treated differently because they have different needs. I don't think the intention of the original policy was to not anticipate that or to go in a different way. If, if the policy needs to be more broad about parking, it's, it's more that and then on top of it, it's the concern of do we really need more parking? If we continue to build parking, we will have more cars, we will have more congestion, we will have more vehicle miles traveled. So again, you know, when we talk about the cap, there's multiple things happening there. One, we're talking about reducing the requirement or the need for parking to reduce vehicle use, also understanding that there would still be lots of people who use vehicles. So I, I guess it just depends, but when I read this, to me, this means we want to provide more parking in our downtown for the public to come and visit, not necessarily in relation to the housing issues we're trying to address.
But I will state that, that is not conveyed in that statement. Because on-street public parking is, is something that is everywhere. So you know, you're talking about eliminating. So what this statement I thought that you were talking about is eliminating not allowing people, so we don't allow people to park on the street between November 1st and April 1st, is it? Overnight, overnight parking, that's overnight. So you're talking about eliminating that whole overnight parking for everywhere in the city in this statement. Is that correct?
Not quite. Also, I'm trying to say is when I, when I reread this revised statement and I see the word public parking, what, what it triggers in my brain when I read public parking is a public parking lot, not public on-street parking. So there's just a differential between a public parking lot or in a public parking facility and on-street public parking. So that's where, when you take the word on-street out, it does sort of lose a little bit of the meaning that the policy was directed more towards on-street parking versus a parking lot.
And, and let me say this too, the the staff did do a full study of peer studies and there are many other schemes for managing winter parking than the one we use, and that is that people do odd and even days, there's all kinds of things. This policy is simply written to support council in reconsidering the policy. It is not telling them how. There's a dozen ways how, that's going to come later. But you are removing some justification for a future policy discussion that council wants to see, and council has given direction on to staff. So I just feel, and you're changing it in a way that I think by changing it the way Commissioner Norton proposed, that not only changes the meaning, but also counteracts some of the comments we've gotten about reducing parking and, and in the name of affordability. And it might make PK one and PK three conflicting policies. If you look on the screen right now, like we, we have a lot of concern with this, this revision because it's, it's creating, when you look at it in just that policy, it looks fine. When you look at it in the context of the public comment and the other policies, it, it's like the sentence that I described earlier, it's going to create some hangups later on.
Sorry, if I can just add one more thing to this, and sorry, my head, it's eight and so my head's a little swimming, so if this isn't what you're trying to do, I apologize. But if the intent is, because I agree with Tiffany, when I see public parking, I think of parking lots as well, like public parking lots. And if that is the intent, I would recommend a separate policy that says pursue public parking strategies to help support the reduction of parking minimums or something like that.
I think what I was trying to to achieve, and, and I understand all the different caveats of this, is that when we list, you know, that it's going to be year round and it's going to be on-street. It just, it's, it sounds very narrow. And I, I didn't feel that it allowed all those flexible options. And I may be wrong in that understanding. So that was my intent of, of this suggestion. So, you know, I would just say allow the commission to, to do a thumbs up, thumbs down.
I my problem with the policy is that now it's been brought to the, my attention is that, you know, when I was reading this, no problem, but then I don't know that it's, that it's conveying what you want it to convey. I mean, is there a way to reword this to convey what you want to convey?
Staff doesn't have a problem with the way it's worded. It, it conveys exactly what we need, not that, it doesn't say repeal the winter parking ordinance or any of those things. It just says, we want to understand how to provide year round, on-street parking, which we currently do not provide. And it also doesn't hold, this policy doesn't hold counsel into that they have to do that. They could go through the process of doing a full policy research and evaluation and decide not to do it. It doesn't tie their hands, but it does give them the support they need to do a policy reconsideration that they've stated they want to look at.
All right, so are we ready to do thumbs up, thumbs down on the proposal? So the proposed writing, which was pursue public parking and related operations and maintenance to support reduction in private parking and promote affordability. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
And the on-street.
So we have three thumbs down, two thumbs up and one neutral. So I don't know where we sounds like a, did you see four thumbs down? One, two, three, four. I didn't count myself.
Yeah, you, you had your thumb down. I was wondering how you got to that. I was like, did she not see? Commissioner Sheehan, okay. It's, it's already getting late.
Never mind.
Okay.
It's getting late.
We're not, we're getting there. I mean, you guys are picking up some steam. The number 24 from the Open Space Commission suggests changing out the verb, if we can pull up PT, MT dot five on page three dash seven, from increase to prioritize. Staff can imagine a whole number of ways in which someone tries to make the case that they are building fewer trails than we had asked for in the plan, but they're still prioritizing it. And therefore staff feels increase is stronger language. Now, MT five says increase the accessibility, connectivity and use of pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure, including the urban trail system and other trail system as a critical element of a safe and livable community. Prioritizes a word staff discussed and chose not to do because we imagine all the ways someone with an attorney might try and wiggle out of that language, and I see Commissioner Sheehan nodding because she is also thinking of all those ways. So I don't think the intent of the Open Space Commission was to make the language weaker. But I think that would be the outcome if we did what they proposed.
Commissioner Mar.
Thanks Chair. I, I think this gets into one of those things that's really wordsmithy. You know, and I think just given the, the slate of things that are remaining that may be more substantive, I think we could just move on with it.
So do we move on without a vote or thumbs up, thumbs down? For adding the, yeah, thumbs down by six to one.
Sorry, number 25. Is there, this actually shows up twice, so we might get rid of comment 32, it just talks about it in a different location. The one comment, and maybe Martin could speak to this, is this new DP eight discusses one context in which we build foots trails, but it is not the only context in which we build foots trails. There are a lot of foots trails that are built in areas that are not creating a natural experience necessarily because there are long major roadways. Would this mean we need to increase the buffer between the road and the foots trail? That's not always easy to negotiate. It's a good thought. We don't have a problem with it as a thought. It's, but, but we actually proposed an alternative design trail systems, and we just said any trail system, not just foots, to emphasize, to provide safe and comfortable connections between the trails that emphasize the natural, ugh, I can't get it to do what I want it to, the natural setting and landscapes and those, and those that provide comfortable low carbon transportation within neighborhoods, districts and centers. Because sometimes it's providing low carbon transportation without the natural setting, and sometimes it's providing the natural setting without the low carbon transportation, like by just be going off into the woods or to a recreational experience. And so it's the and of that, that I think was a little problematic when we looked at it. Because it assumed that every trail will meet both of those needs.
So do we want to do a thumbs up for the language that the staff has proposed? So again, thumbs up for the language the staff has proposed.
Oh, it also would move it to transportation systems instead of DP.
I'm sorry?
The staff also recommends putting this policy under transportation systems and not under development patterns.
Okay.
I would like to defer to, to Robert Wallace and ask if, if, question him, if the the recommended revision is in alignment with what the commission, what you feel the commission intended. And I know, I remember the discussion. You know, that we were just, they were looking for foots trails that weren't just along sidewalks and roadways, that they were actually using natural trails within a property. So I just want to make sure that we're expressing the same intent.
Thanks for the question. You know, thinking back to the Open Spaces Commission's intent when they discussed this particular topic. They thought that mentioning it underneath a development pattern goal would help promote development patterns that would then support trails, not just foots, but trails, inclusion like throughout attainable housing. So I think that that's why the Open Spaces Commission decided to, to put this under DP. And maybe Sarah could help clarify why why it might fit better underneath the transportation system. I also, when we, when I was just looking at this, I was just wondering if maybe staff also could clarify the, what comfort maybe means in this particular context. Are there any other questions maybe I can help with?
We might ask Martin to talk about comfort because it's got a specific definition in that active transportation master plan, which by the way, is also the rationale for putting it under transportation systems is where it's located in development patterns is not, it's under the same priority as transportation systems, but it's disconnected from the active transportation master plan, which is, I assume, what we would want to be kind of connecting it with.
So does Martin want to give that definition?
Martin, can you talk about comfort as the defined term in the ATMP?
Uh, sure, I can give it a try. I, I think comfortable is, is kind of a takeoff on the idea of safety, like people talk about they want walking and biking to feel, to be safe and to feel, to have a, a feeling of safety while they do it. And we try to elevate that to make it, safety is a fairly low bar. Like it, it really, it doesn't take nearly as much to make something safe as it does to make it comfortable. Comfortable just means that people find it appealing to use, actually enjoy using it. Yes, they have an element of safety, but it, it has something more additional beyond that as well.
And Martin, would that include inclusion for people with disabilities, comfort? Would that include that?
Oh, certainly. And I, and I think, you know, we have kind of a flexible definition of what is comfortable, but I think, you know, people who are differently abled would, would definitely have you know, kind of different needs for what makes it, what makes it comfortable.
Okay. Yes.
I, I, I think we're kind of getting away from maybe what the Open Space Commission intended. You know, what they were looking at is like some of these large green You know, what they were looking at is like some of these large greenfield sites. And when they set out to design their master plan or they piece together different plots and they are trying to, you know, adhere to a foots trail system, that sometimes the trail system ends up as a sidewalk or, you know, as an afterthought. And this was meant to, being placed under development pattern goal, it was meant to intend that maybe there can be foots trails that are a more natural experience through these greenfield spaces as the developments are being planned.
So could you, would you say you only meant this to apply to new neighborhoods and not infill sites? That's unclear from the language that was forwarded by the commission.
Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's what we had in mind. I mean, that was the intention is out of great concern for foots and how foots looks on greenfield spaces south of the 40.
Can I ask a question though? I mean, sometimes foots are absolutely intended in certain developments to be or replace a sidewalk. And sometimes they're more intended to be natural. So how would you differ? I mean, would you, are you, I mean, we rely, and I see.
Martin's hands up, yeah.
How would you, how do you use the policy when you differentiate between those two, I guess?
Should we just not build any unless we can get them in a natural setting? Should we skip them if we can't? I mean, that's kind of the questions we'd ask.
I think it was more of a intention of where it can be part of a community's, you know, environment that priority or, you know, that they were cognizant of that.
I just, I would throw out Timber Sky as an example, right? So you have this foots that's very in a natural setting in some instances, then comes into the urban environment along Route 66 and then goes back into a much more natural environment. It's just, I mean, there are just obviously going to be some situations where the trail's going to need to interact with a more urban environment. And so.
I can maybe just.
By definition, you're right.
Martin has his hand up. So Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Dino. Just a, just a thought, I think, and Robert or Mary can correct me if I don't have this all the way right. But I think when you look at the, at the foots map, there's, there's a disclaimer that essentially says that foots trails need to connect across a property on either end. And that, and that really is the only important thing. And so we're sort of deferring how the trail connects in between through development to developer. And of course, it, it matters greatly to the experience of a foots trail, how it connects through development. And if, if that be along a natural area or in a more urban setting, it can really go either way. But, but I think what the Open Space Commission, and in fact, I think probably a couple of other commentators on, in the list were after is if, if we're telling developers that it doesn't really matter, we just want the connection to be made. Can we give them more guidance on what makes a meaningful foots trail in between? And again, I, I think that that could be where it follows natural features. When there aren't natural features, how does it incorporate it into the urban environment or to the, to the developed context? And trying to give a little bit of, of policy guidance that these things do matter to the experience of a foots trail. And to not, you know, maybe answer everything in, in terms of providing specific, specific guidelines or even code language, but just to give kind of a policy that we want our trails to be designed this way as part of development. Does that, does that help clarify? And did I, and maybe I'll look to Robert, did I get that right with the Open Space Commission's intent?
But Martin, I need to ask a question from that, and I know it's late and we probably talked about this a few weeks ago. But isn't all of that in the active transportation master plan? I thought you had policies that covered that.
Uh, yes, but I, I would, I think that that's a similar question to before. Like what, what does the active transportation master plan get us when we're reviewing development? Versus how much stronger does it make it to be in the regional plan?
I just want to add that what Martin's clarification is correct. Like the reason for putting it into a policy is to help encourage that alignment in a, in a thoughtful way that adds to that natural experience as opposed to like leaving the trail next to the road if it's an afterthought, like, so I think like that is why the commission decided to put it into the DP section. Although I think the revised, the revisions that staff made as far as like how the definition might change a little doesn't affect the overall intent. So I'll leave it up to the commission. Thanks.
If I can, I just want to add that typically we, we often want things in the regional plan, especially when we have a discretionary review, because that's how we can have the authority to ask for it. In this instance, we actually, it's in our zoning code and it refers to the ATMP, which means it doesn't necessarily have to live into the regional plan to be effectuated on either a permitted by right development or something that's going through discretionary review. So, I mean, I understand the higher level policy and all of that, but we do have code connection as well as an ATMP. We're about to have an open space master plan. We're going to have a safe streets master plan. I think a lot of those documents are really where these conversations should happen and where these policies should live. I think there should be a couple of broad policies in the regional plan that supported those. But just kind of remembering what this document actually is. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Are we ready to vote thumbs up or thumbs down? I'm asking you to vote. I think a thumbs up on what the city has recommended, the staff. Is that an okay way to do this? Or do you want me to go with what Open Space Commission had suggested? Which way do you want me to go? Okay, let's do a staff. Everybody who agrees with the staff revision, thumbs up or thumbs down? So we've got one thumbs down and six thumbs up for redoing it as the staff has written it.
So the next one is from Commissioner Sharp. It is about addressing the conflict between infill and flood regulations. I talked about this with Ed Schenk, our stormwater manager, and Lee is here if we have questions. He says, yes, there's locations that were infill being the flood plain, but that doesn't mean it isn't possible. It just might be more expensive in those locations. This could be clarified in the background text. But we don't see it as a huge, we see it as a conflict that's kind of too detailed to get into in the regional plan. So too much, Josh said, maybe I need a too much detail button, like, you know, the easy button. I'd hit the too much detail button for this one, though we could make a small revision if needed.
Fair enough. And, and I think Ed's right. And the Stormwater Management Manual takes care of a lot of this. My worry was there's a conflict between try to stay away from flood plains versus infill is going to be in flood plains. So it was more of a caution, but I think we're fine.
So thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs down. It looks like, can people put their hands up again? A hundred percent thumbs down.
So another piece is under building blocks, active transportation plans on page four dash 34. And I think we should pull this page up to add a sentence that says, trail design alignment should be integrated through natural experiences. So this is the second place that the Open Space Commission recommended turning in this language. Staff just says, if you, if you want to add this here, this is actually kind of an okay location because it's a background or informational portion. As long as you added the words where appropriate, I think it would be fine to add to page four dash three, four. I appreciate when people try and put the same language in two places because they usually get it right 50% of the time.
Any questions or?
So this would be the bottom of the next section if you'd scroll up. So it'd be adding a sentence here at the end of that section that says, building block, active transportation plans.
So where would you add this sentence again?
After the words in cooperation with a property owner.
I'm sorry?
Robert was just confirming that's where he believes they also wanted to see the language inserted.
So stuff's not finding it.
Right, right before the building blocks, great streets and gateways.
Okay.
The last sentence in the, right there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can you go back to what was recommended?
The recommendation is to add a sentence that says, trail design and alignment should be integrated, should integrate natural experiences that interconnect neighborhoods and increase safe low carbon access to community infrastructure. Staff would say where appropriate at the end.
Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Looks like total thumbs up.
See winners. All right. The next one is in chapter five. And it says, add language to track and evaluate short-term rentals and second homes on the availability affordability of workforce housing. There was a presentation that included this from housing last night. DP dot five covers this to the best of our current legal ability and lobbying is outside the scope of the plan. So.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs down.
And then I'm going to just keep rolling through chapter five. I appreciate the comments, Commissioner Sharp, but both of the next two are outside of the scope of the plan.
All right. So thumbs down, thumbs up, thumbs down.
For the next one, which is number 56, this is already being considered as part of the last cap. And there is some language in the action items that say, do the last cap essentially, like implement the last cap. So I think this is covered by a different action item.
And we already do a lot of these too.
Right. So.
We just need money.
Some thumbs up, thumbs down. Six thumbs down.
All right. Number 51, of course, we're like jumping all around, but this one, we couldn't decide if it was meant for chapter five or 10. And I asked sustainability about like, don't, do we have funding mechanisms for these things? I think we don't fully as staff understand the comment. So maybe you can go a little further into it and help us understand the intent here. And maybe Jenny can come up with information or feedback.
So I've slept a few times as I wrote this, so I've forgotten too.
Oh, no.
I think it was more frustration that if I understood the way it was written, it sounded like we're going to build EVs at the expense of residents. When we're trying to support EVs for tourists, well, if we're going to do that, let's just go ahead and find funding mechanisms that tourists can fund these EV charging stations.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp, Chairman Neiman, Climate Action Section Director. So I, I understand the comment. I totally get it. We talk about vehicle electrification. And what I will say is that we want better transportation options for everybody, for residents and tourists, right? We want a lot of our residents to use vehicle electrification, just as tourists do as well. The city currently has 18 EV charging stations. Those were put in mainly through a grant and partnership with APS at minimal cost to the city. We recently, on July 1st, switched to charging for that electricity. And I will tell you from the data that we have, it's a pretty even mix of residents and tourists. And, and now because of that switch to charging for EV charging, the cost of that is paid by the user, which is what we would prefer, right? And so what that has done is set up a fund so that revenue from EV charging goes back into maintaining those systems and expanding when there is revenue. But I, I certainly understand the concern. Our goal is so that we provide vehicle electrification charging for everybody that needs it. And also that we have cost recovery in that process.
So it sounds like you're mostly addressing what I asked already then.
So, so yeah, I was just going to say it sounds like it's already been done, what you've said. And that we don't necessarily need it in the plan the way it's stated. Thumbs up, thumbs down? I love when the person who makes the comment votes thumbs down, but that was.
Sometimes it's just getting the information, right? So there is a request to amend chapter 10 and six to explicitly acknowledge visitor transportation emissions that need to be addressed as part of the city's climate strategy. That is not treated as incidental in the regional plan. But tourism has associated land use issues, but it's not in itself a land use issue. Does that make sense? Like a hotel is a tourism use, but it might also be a conference center. It might also serve meeting rooms for the community. Like it's hard to like, it's like when people ask me what student housing wants, and I said, all housing is student housing. I could say the same thing about tourism land uses. Everything could be a tourism land use. And therefore breaking out emissions that are tourism related from other emissions is way outside the scope of the plan and a very difficult analysis I wouldn't try and just tack on at this point.
No, I think you're right. I think I was getting frustrated that I felt like there was disagreement in the plan where, you know, one side, we're harrying ourselves. We have 5 million tourists every year that are driving up here and, you know, spewing out all these emissions that we're against, you know? So I don't know. I, I just felt like for consistency's sake, make the comment, but we could thumbs down it.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs down.
The next one, number 48, is something we're going to do in, in coordination with the upcoming streets, safe streets, master planning efforts. So I don't think we're ready to add it to the plan because that analysis doesn't exist, but it will someday.
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Thumbs down.
All right. Number 50. Establish incentives for tour operators and large venues to provide low emission group transportation rather than relying on individual vehicles. We have some things in the plan that fit this a little. I just want to say like, overall, this is kind of a programmatic thing that's outside the scope of the plan. But we do talk about getting bus service to the airport in the, in the five-year plan for mountain line. And that is specifically, and also them continuing to provide transit to Snow Bowl. So I think they have some tourism related things for emissions purposes in their plans. So.
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Okay, thumbs down has it.
Yeah, they're good ideas. They're not, they're not ideas we haven't discussed. Six, the number 49 has the same problem. That's really something for like mountain line and the forest service to go figure out, not us in a land use plan.
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Thumbs down has it. Hundred percent.
Okay, for this one, I think we'll, for 58, we're going to need to pull up the policy. It says revise the first high priority action item to add to allow for parking and multimodal travel. This is again, removing the year round on-street.
So this is, yeah, I, this was part of my other one. So we don't need to do this one because we're not, we didn't move forward on the other one. So it's just would have made it consistent with. I withdraw it or we can vote it down, however we want to do it.
Thumbs down? All right.
Number 62, it's a great suggestion if the data existed and was comprehensive enough to include in the plan, but it does not. There is data on ponderosa pine stands, but we do not have a comprehensive tree inventory. That data has gaps in it that would be, that have made the current plan's significant natural resources map very difficult to interpret and explain to property owners. It's easier to map trees on a site by site basis. And that's where we would rather be doing it for now until we complete a tree inventory at some future date. It's just, we, we have data in the plan right now that is completely misleading. And I have had to re-explain it to property owners over and over again. It's just wrong scaled. So when that data exists, sure, we could add that administratively to the plan, update the significant natural resources. I just can't, I can't make it exist today. And we did an extensive search with all of our agency partners and researchers. So we did our due diligence here.
I think if we were going to do it, oh, just if we were going to do it, I think we'd want to map old growth stands. But, and I think that's where I was headed. And I was trying to segue into what you were trying to create with all of the data that would be required into the new pilot program. And I also considered it, you know, the ponderosa pines to be a natural resource. So I thought they should be, they should be mapped. However, I think Open Space took, took this a little further. It'll probably come up in, in, in further on down. So anyway, yeah, we can, we. So, um, anyway, um, yeah, we can, we can disregard this one.
And I'm also happy to show you what some of the data is coming out looking like, and you could see how difficult it would be to do it on a large scale.
So we're just gonna disregard that statement, because Mary's taking it.
Down or take, yeah, just do the thumbs down.
Mary will take it, or thumbs down? Okay.
Yeah, you can thumbs down it. I promise, I looked, I called NRCS, we didn't, uh, we didn't give it up. So then, the next one is to add a new sentence after the first sentence on page eight dash three. So I think we'll have to pull up eight dash three. That says, "Future open space and parks should be placed throughout the development to meet system connectivity, be accessible for residents, maintain natural corridors, and support neighborhood viability, livability." Staff's concern with this is it's written like a guideline, but it's in a background section. There are no guidelines on this page, so it's just inappropriate to use the word "should." You could say something like.
Could you say "may"?
You could say something, yeah, like, like "may," or you could say "can be placed," or something like that, but "should" is just not an appropriate verb. So if you change that out, can do it, that's fine.
Do people agree with the word "may"? Thumbs up, thumbs down for amendment and with the word "may"? We got seven thumbs up.
Great. This one is number thirty-eight. It's fine to update this one to short term, and we don't have a strong feeling on the way it's written versus the way the Open Space Commission wants it written. It means the same thing roughly. We just see this as a rewording.
Yeah, the theory was behind this is that there's so much development happening already that it should be bumped up to a short-term, uh, just timeframe bump up.
That's fine, it doesn't obligate council to do anything in the short term. It's just that's a statement of intent on how fast we should move, so that would be fine.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up, has it?
And then thirty-nine, same, there's no staff recommendation from planning. Same for number forty.
The, I, hold on a second. Remind?
So it's to add that to the priority? What does the second priority say right now?
We can pull up page eight dash four. I think it's just adding the word "including" after the word "initiatives." Fine. And then changing it to "short-term."
And change what?
And changing it from midterm to short-term.
To short-term.
And removing "consider" from the front, so instead of "consider pursuing," to "pursuing."
I'm sorry, what?
The word "consider" deleted it from the front, just saying "pursue" without the word "consider."
Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up, has it?
And then the next one is something that used to be in the early chapter of chapter eight, and then it was changed out for something else, and this is just recommending putting it back in, which is fine.
So that's forty?
Forty. Mm-hmm, number forty. Add a regular action item, develop a comprehensive tree inventory that adds native tree species, highlighting the ponderosa pine stands as a Significant Natural Resource to the mapped resource section in chapter seven.
So my question of that would be, if that's a regular action item, is there anything to fund that, so?
Not currently, but not every action item is funded already. Sometimes they're just a thing we might go get a grant for in a future year, and tree inventories are the kind of things you can sometimes get a grant for, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Thumbs up, thumbs down? We've got total thumbs up.
You wanna talk about the next one, Tiffany? The next one, number forty-one, is asking to create new development incentives and density bonuses for providing open space. There are already incentives for housing and sustainability in the zoning code, and sometimes they compete with each other, and the last cap took a lot of effort to look at them. So I'll let Tiffany talk about that.
So part of the problem that we're seeing, just even with our existing incentive programs, is that we've held back the buy-right allowances in our zoning code in order to incentivize certain developments or certain features within developments. And so that also has an implication in terms of achieving certain community goals. So, you know, a big part of cap is moving the code and forward in a buy-right manner. So there's that issue, which also starts to reduce what some of those incentives look like. We do already have some incentives in code. The planned residential development option is specifically an incentive intended to garner open space within a development. It requires, if you use that mechanism, um, that there be fifteen, at least fifteen percent open space affiliated with that development. And if you're using it on a large site, that's, that can be fairly substantial. There are other areas that we're looking at moving towards, um, including creating a zoning category district called Planned Area Development, um, which would be like a zoning district that allows a developer to, um, create their own zoning tools. Most of P A Ds are built around open space as a component of that. But we were also looking at broadening that to not just be open space, but to also look at wildfire resilient communities. And how, even how open space interacts with being a wildfire resilient community. So we have a lot of burgeoning issues. The idea of incentives, we're getting a lot more pushback in general on incentives as a whole from our development communities and from some of our, I would say, YIMBY groups, who are, um, seeking to see certain things. So it just, the more things we try to incentivize, the more things get washed out as a, as a whole, the, the sometimes, the more times we tend to hold back the code. So, and, but there are areas currently where we do require open space as part of the development plan. So, um, I think in terms of this, it would just be, um, I don't know that private development is ever going to a hundred percent deliver for the whole public good. So where, you know, what is the rationale in terms of what we're, we're looking for? But yeah, it's just, it becomes a, a competition in the market. But I think the biggest thing is making our code whole and complete, and making sure that our code delivers buy-right development, regardless of whatever policies are in the regional plan that gets us to meeting the community goals.
Any questions or comments, Mary?
I, I just wanted to kinda address a little bit more of the, of the intent of this, and, and it was like, you know, if we, if we don't mention and, and bring to the attention that we are looking for open space and, and parks, and, you know, ten-minute walk, walking access to, uh, trails or foots connectivity, if we don't put it out there, we may, I mean, we may not get it. And, and I think there's plenty of developers, developments, that, you know, they're, they're not really going to be intentional in their housing goals, or maybe even their climate goals. But, you know, their development in itself, or their, their community, their master plan, whatever, whatever, whatever scale that they're working within, they might be able to deliver some open space, or a park. And if we could at least encourage that by mentioning that, and maybe, uh, you know, listing, you know, incentive, incentives and density bonuses was too limiting. But I, I think there needs to be some creative thinking on how we can start to encourage that, so that if we're not able to get what we are looking for out of housing and climate, maybe we can at least get something that's of benefit to the community when those projects are developed anyway, buy-right as they wish. So I think the, the really helpful part of that conversation is, is I can tell you a number of times I've brought a development case forward that included open space that the city did not want to take. So, um, you know, there used to be limitations on the amount of a park at park we would want. We weren't interested in taking, I think there was a policy, an active policy for a long time, that we wouldn't take anything in the one to two acre range. And, you know, that it becomes sort of a maintenance issue for the city in terms of those things. I think what would be really helpful is understanding sort of the size and range of what's acceptable, acceptable, or like the standards for what that open space looks like and what those parks look like, and what sort of the expectation is. Because sometimes I think it's hard to exact from a developer, if you're working with a developer and you can get that piece of land for that park or open space, but then on top of it, they have to maintain it, or all of that HOA has to maintain it, that can where, be where some of the rub starts to come into play, right? So just, I throw that out there, that it, it could be really helpful that over time, if we had a standard of, yeah, th- this is what the caliber of the property needs to be in order for us to want to accept it, that would be helpful.
You know, yeah, I, I wanna second that. I think the two, the comments for forty-one and forty-two kind of overlap here. The underlying reason we're not getting open space and parks in some of these locations is funding. It is not the code. The issue is that we don't have funding to purchase lands, that when we're, when parks and open space has been offered properties, they said we don't have money to maintain it, or we can't add anything to our maintenance budget right now. And that, that is the, that's why that is the number one high priority under Parks, Recreation and Open Space. And there's, the code would allow some of that to happen if we had funding. If the funding was adequate, it's currently not. And that is the, that's the challenge, I think, is that when planning staff looks at this, we think of all the times open space and parks have been turned down from, and you're saying, "Well, if you could just get us the property, we'd, we'd take it." That's not true, really. So I think there's more work to do there, but it's, it's probably not directly in the code.
Yeah, so one of the things I wanted to bring up is that I know in my neighborhood, there's open space that's not been, there's no development in the, of my, you know, I've lived there forty years. And, um, Skyline, Skyline is it, that's next to me? Is that where you live, Skyview, Skyline, whatever? Well, you're in Skyline. So, um, in, next door to Swiss Manor, there was a, um, there was a space for open space. It was never developed, and then it became, uh, it's now a cul-de-sac with homes on it. So, because it was within a, I don't know if it was a twenty or thirty-year period that if nothing was done with the open space, then it just reverted, and it reverted to housing. So I don't know who owned that land. I don't know, you know, so I think it's a problem, like you say, that it doesn't get developed because there's the affordability issue, there's liability issues, there's just different issues regarding that. So I've seen that happen in our city. And the solution is either do nothing with it. It's, it's open space. I mean, I walk through the open space in my neighborhood all the time because they put a little trail through it. But the other one, it was, you know, it went the, whatever years it had to go, and then it reverted. I don't know, like I said, who owned that property to build the ho- homes on and to develop the cul-de-sac, but then it was developed if it was sold to a developer or whatever.
Same thing happened with a school site in my neighborhood, but I think that, um, Rebecca Sayers, our Pro's Director, might have a few comments.
Hi, everyone, how we doing? Are you ready?
It's, it's getting, oh, almost to nine o'clock, and we still have, like, a hundred and fifty more to go through.
I do not want to delay your conversation, but I did wanna provide a little bit of current, uh, practice and policy. What's been said, um, by Tiffany and Sarah is absolutely right. In the past, because of lack of maintenance dollars, the city did decline donations for open space or parks. That is not our current policy, and in fact, several years ago, our Parks and Recreation Commission changed that direction to not accept anything in the one to two acre, the pocket parks. They actually revised their own master plan to encourage those. Um, and now we welcome anything that we can get. So I think in partnership with what the Open Spaces Commission is suggesting and what Tiffany and Sarah are saying, we are also working, we are embarking on our own master plan for all of Parks, Rec, Open Space and Events. That should be done in the next twelve to eighteen months, hopefully. And, um, we'll provide that context that, that Tiffany was stating would be helpful for developments in the future.
And that is also an action item in the plan. I think that maybe there's an attempt here to, right, to preempt the master planning process. Not intentional, but just not understanding that that's where we'll be doing that work.
I just have, I just have one question. We don't have P A Ds right now, is that correct, Tiffany?
That's correct.
See, you don't have what?
But you know what P A D is.
Planned Area Development. Once you get those, and you need to get to your fifteen percent open space, that's where all these one and two acre parks are planned, and then the HOA manages them. So when we deal with older neighborhoods, like our neighborhood that we live in, it's old, it's never been done, but when you get into the newer planning techniques, that's when you get all of these parks. And it really helps the marketing and sale of those properties, because you have the trails, you have the pocket parks, basketball courts, um, tennis courts, whatever they decide to put in. So once we have that, I think you'll probably see more. But it is so odd to me that we don't have a P A D zoning district, because most cities have them. Even the counties have them.
Right, it's weird. I think, I think staff's message here is that these two action items are confusing and unnecessary because the master plan is covered, the future P A D is covered, and the funding need is covered. And I think this is a misunderstanding about where the problem can be solved most effectively.
So Commissioner Marr, you had a statement.
Sarah covered it.
Okay, thank you, and Commissioner.
I wanted to add, you know, Proz now has a lot of BBB funding coming their way for budgeting. So they, they would be able to in the future, um, potentially, you know, uh, take care of these newer parks and such. Also, I wanted to bring up, like, you know, we hear a lot of the developers on the greenfields sites complain about how much of it is undevelopable, you know, by escarpments and things like that. How do we, and this is, some of the intent, at least in my mind, some of the intent of this is, okay, leave it undeveloped and encourage it to be left undeveloped so that it becomes a neighborhood or a wildlife corridor, just open space. And how do we go about that? So, you know, maybe, you know, like I said, maybe our suggestions on how to incentivize or that, um, off. Or wish that, um, we could make some kind of mechanism or awareness that we are looking for those kinds of things. We're looking for parks, we're looking for neighborhoods, we're looking, looking for wildlife corridors and, um, trails and such.
I think that's stated in other parts of the regional plan.
Accurate.
Yeah. So can we do a, so do we wanna do forty-one, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Forty-one, which is add a, add an action item to develop incentives, density bonus, expedited reviews and partnerships, dot, dot.
I, I don't see everybody's thumbs up, thumbs down. We have two, three thumbs up, four thumbs down. And then if we want to just include that with, we were talking about number forty-two as well.
Forty-two is that conduct a code analysis.
Right. And do we wanna do a thumbs up, thumbs down?
Are we? Question on that, though, is like, if you're, would a code analysis or some sort of analysis, would that then look into the options of making forty-one happen? Is that, is that a feasible ask? Adding that.
So I just, I, I don't think, I think this stated in the comments, the code isn't the problem. It's the funding to acquire the easements and the, the open space and to also, um, provide the necessary maintenance of those.
and to also, um, provide the necessary maintenance of those.
Commissioner Norton, I just want to say, this is, this to me is a lot like the US one eighty comment we get all the time of like, we need to study US one eight. We've studied this. We, we know. We don't need another analysis to tell you how to solve this problem. I know maybe we haven't communicated it clearly to the Open Space Commission. That's what this tells me. But it, it has been studied, it is understood by staff. It's not, the, the source of the problem is misidentified in this comment.
Oh, yeah. Just, so, I mean, I, it, if the code analysis project, it had some very specific goals, right? It has the housing and the carbon neutrality goals affiliated with it. And those are things where if there's different levers in the code, we can take and we can model to say, you know, if we bump up density can't, is there a way that we can change or alter the cost of housing? Is it, it's not really, I'm not sure necessarily how to model or to go after a code provision that says if we bump up density, we can achieve, um, additional opens. I, you know, it's just, it's a hard thing to show when there are code provisions in place, for example, like the PRD and then talking about the PAD, which has a, a certain percentage of open space affiliated with it. And so what, what do we need in terms of those standards? And maybe that's a great place for the Open Space Commission to look at is, because like you're saying, like even those undevelopable areas, because that's, a lot of times that's what they end up being. Sometimes is like the steep slopes or something that's difficult. Um, wildlife corridors, floodplains, the like. Um, they, there's a lot of things that overlap there. So what is it that the code's not, how is the code not achieving that? And what more does the code need to do? And I don't know if it requires like hiring a full consultant to go through that process, but maybe with the Open Space Commission's expertise, that is something that they could look at for us and help guide us where the code is not succeeding. And what specifically you're looking for in terms of, of that development? I mean, development's never going to provide big, I mean, it's, right? I mean, you know, the limitations of what development can provide and you're such a great resource to that commission, knowing what development cases look like. You could bring that expertise and we can bring more cases to the Open Space Commission so they can see what we're working with on the small and large level. Um, and then we can talk about what code looks like in terms of those requirements. And we'll certainly be advocating what that PAD looks like with open spaces.
I would also just add that, um, PROS is going to be doing an open space master plan. And actually, that's probably the most critical thing in addition to money. Um, and that could be maybe a recurring theme, but I mean, that really is the critical component. Because once that master plan is completed and adopted and has identified the types of priorities and the, and the space and the areas, that actually does strengthen the, what we have in code already. So I, I just, I really want to make a big plug for the importance of that plan.
Okay. So can we do a thumbs up or thumbs down on item forty-two? We've got seven thumbs down. And then I'm going to ask, um, if we can take a five minute break.
Can we do sixty-six since it'll be super easy?
We can do sixty-six.
Someone caught a missed abbreviation because it was in an image and they're correct. We missed this abbreviation and the definition. So we'll just, just give it a thumbs up and we'll do it. Thank you. And then we can take a break on number thirty.
Okay, we're taking a five minute break. When was that? Well, let's just go through the plan. I think that was in case we needed a separate meeting, but what I'm going to ask is that we have about seven or eight items that we had moved over to considering from our last time. And then we have a lot more comments that we can look at and decide whether or not we want to consider them or just move on. So we don't have to consider, I mean, we've gone through forty, forty-five comments?
Sixty.
Fifty? And that, um, then we can look at the comments that have come in since then and decide whether or not we want to even, um, review them. And then I'm going to ask people, we're, we're going to try to plow through this tonight. I don't, I know some of you have work tomorrow, um, and you have to get up early. So if we can limit our comments to what's necessary, if it's already something that was said and supported, please, um, just limit your comments. So we're now on to, um,
Thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah. So thirty, this is a comment that was received from several people, actually, not just the Open Space Commission, that there is a, can you pull up the map, please? There's a suburban center area that they would like to see changed to suburban neighborhood. The suburban center in question is on a property that's in the John Wesley Powell area. And it's actually on the arterial, which is where we want activity centers. And I think there's some misunderstanding about where the natural versus manmade features are in this area. So staff does not recommend this change. Be made. That's our staff recommendation.
So do we want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down?
I have something to say about this.
Do, do you want to see the map too?
Yeah. So this was, this is a suburban, uh, center that got added in down at the bottom there, and it's very close to, uh, an area that open space has targeted, but I've learned for many, many years as an area of sensitivity that they wish to preserve or at least have some say in how that area might be developed. Because the rear of the flags in there is a wildlife corridor, Hoffman Tank is nearby. Um, and I just feel that this suburban center was randomly, maybe by the request of, of a, of a private landowner, large private landowner in this exact vicinity. And, um, I know that, uh, to open space, this feels like their, uh, priorities of areas that are, uh, sensitive has been somewhat, you know, overlooked. Um, and that either that this suburban center in this location needs to be removed or moved elsewhere.
Do we want to look at it on a map?
Yeah. And so it's this brown area on the eastern side of the Gibson property that, um, Arrow is where I believe Hoffman Tank is, which was one of the concerns. But that might also be, there's some areas to the north too. But you can see there's kind of a riparian area that runs through this. But that riparian area is also where our arterial roadway is going to be. So I mean, once council realigned John Wesley Powell, this is the look, when you saw other locations for this activity center, it's because it was on other potential alignments of the arterial. And now the minor arterial is in this location. So that's part of why that has been moved.
So I'd make two, uh, two other additional comments is, you know, I also have sympathy for the rural neighborhood. That's the county island of Harold Ranch. Um, now this suburban center has been plotted right next to them. Also, when I was watching the city council meeting last night and symmetry was sharing their plans for their large L-shaped state land piece, they had some, um, commercial things in there. Um, I, I just, I just think that this area right here, this specific area is not the place for that suburban center designation.
Commissioner Marr?
Alignment of JW Powell Boulevard has been long discussed among council. Correct? Okay.
Anybody else? Thumbs up or thumbs down? We've got six thumbs down, one thumbs up.
Um, okay. So number forty-five was from Commissioner Sharp and it was, uh, adding to the glossary a specific definition. Ed and I went through the document and found that the term floodplain is used in a high, a large variety of ways. And so we are just proposing an alternative way to add something to the glossary and I hope, hope it's acceptable.
It's perfect.
So, um, thumbs up to what the city is proposing? We've got seven thumbs up.
Okay, sixty-seven is, um, oop, that one got overridden on accident somehow. Yeah, don't move that. Go back. Um, so the other one is we did use the term paratransit and not define it. So, um, Commissioner Randall from CIL, as a personal comment, put this one forward and that's fine. Staff agrees.
All thumbs up or thumbs down? All thumbs up.
Number twenty-seven, map, policy map three dash one for parks and open space needs, um, that are, there is some confusion about this map. They said that it should say parks and open space needs are not limited to areas addressed on the map, but staff proposed an alternative language that is, map three dash one only identify needs for large scale parks and open space. Needs for smaller geographic scales will be identified in the appropriate master plan. That's our proposal.
Mary?
Yeah, no, in favor of, of staff's rewrite, if that's acceptable.
All in favor of the staff rewrite? Thumbs up? Seven thumbs up?
Number fifty-nine, this one is, um, interesting. So there's a desired, there's a bubble that we'll have to pull up the map to see that says areas subject to future connectivity study on the Symmetry and Little America property. This was largely proposed because it's a very, and Jeff and Stephanie, I know have stayed awake long enough to answer this question if we need to, that this area has a lot of topography and floodplain and challenging issues. And so we did not feel highly confident we could identify a consistent road network on it. We also don't know the future uses, which is part of what would be used for trip generation and a traffic impact analysis, and that is the purpose of the bubble. It is, the, the request to add more specific streets connections is staff feels would be arbitrary.
Mary?
And I can just kind of explain what my thought process was here. You know, understanding that it obviously needs a, a future connectivity study, but I mean, that leaves it pretty wide open. Um, where we're not even requiring to show some streets through those properties. I, I, I'm trying to remember, I looked back on regional plan twenty thirty and I, I think there was. I, I, I'm trying to remember, I looked back on Regional Plan 2030, and I, I think there was actually more in that one than there would be in 2045's regional plan, so I was just, you know, if we don't, again, if we don't put the intention for where we want streets and then street network and connectivity, then, you know, we don't get it. I was just wanting something stronger than it, it needed more than just a connectivity study. We needed to have some expectations of what we expect to see on, in streets on those parcels.
Do, do you want to answer that, or?
I don't know if Stephanie or Jeff want to talk about that. Short answer, guys.
Hey, good evening. Jeff Bowman, City Traffic Engineer and Transportation Director. Yes, I did stay awake. Yeah, so this area, as Sarah mentioned, has all of those characteristics that we don't quite know what's going to happen there. We are embarking on our Safe Streets Master Plan here in the next couple of months, and we plan to have much stronger guidelines for spacing of collectors and arterials, minor collectors, major collectors. And I think through that process, we'll be able to take a look at this blue area, and we'll also have just better guidelines, even if, when we don't have well-laid out things to help development, you know, find the right patterns and the right spacings to make things work well. Quick answer.
Okay, are we ready for a thumbs up or thumbs down? Let's vote. We've got two thumbs up and, three thumbs up, I'm sorry, and four thumbs down.
Number sixty is a repeat, we can skip it. You already made that decision. So thirty-three is to revise the disclaimer on the trails maps that's in a particular way that provides like a list of reasons. It's, this is sort of, again, mixing up a policy or a guideline with a disclaimer. Like, you're trying to turn the disclaimer into a policy. It's just not appropriate. The list of criteria for successful realignment in this description is not exhaustive. Staff would rather see a third sentence added that says, and also the term system connectivity is not specified yet. It will be specified through the ATMP and the Safe Streets Master Plan. The needs for property, of the property for development and its development proposal and proportionality of requests for these experiences is also, this language is too broad to consider those legal implications. So in terms of a disclaimer, I think we would, I don't know, and I would ask Christina to evaluate it on the spot, but this might not pass legal muster. It's not really a disclaimer, it's trying to turn a disclaimer into something else.
All right, are we ready for a thumbs up, thumbs down? I think we have one thumbs up and the rest are thumbs down.
Um, the next one is adding existing and planned access points and trailheads from map, current regional plan map twenty-six E to four dash five. Staff did not do that because it makes the map unreadable. Um, and we're already getting a lot of comments on the maps failing to be per, accessible enough, so making them complicated is worse. But if we wanted to add only the planned points, then that could work. But the existing ones are unnecessary to show.
Mary?
Um, yeah, and I think this was also part of FBO's letter. They wanted to see trail access points and trailheads visible on the map as well. So there was additional community support for that. Bert wants to talk, address that, or explain it further, why, why that was considered important as things get developed?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Yes, there was a map in the previous regional plan, twenty-six E, that had some of these access points and trailheads on them. And when the Open Spaces Commission discussed this, they did think it was important to include both existing and planned ones for clarity, since a lot of the other maps that are used by the city are, do use both existing and planned. That said, I think it would be good to have planned over having nothing.
So staff has suggested, is this right, the existing access points? What have you suggested?
Staff suggests just bringing forward the planned access, planned trailheads and forest access. The existing ones exist. They're not a, sometimes the reason we show something that's existing is not a consistency issue, it's that the state statute requires we show the existing. It's not really actually useful.
So do we want to have a thumbs up, thumbs down? For what this?
Add this in because it'll avoid, avoid just having to talk about when we get to FBO's part. So they had suggested adding forest access icons as an option as well. When you say adding existing points on your staff recommendation, what would they, what would that look like?
Our staff recommendation is not to add the existing forest access or trailheads, only the planned ones.
I see, I see, I re, I misread that.
Yeah, that's okay.
So thumbs up, thumbs down on what the staff recommends? Thumbs up on what staff recommends? We've got six thumbs up, one thumbs down.
So number thirty-five is very similar to the comment earlier from F cubed about the single track and neighborhood. I don't remember what we voted on for that, but it's basically, they're calling out different specific trails, but making the same comment. Do you want to just carry it forward however we did that one?
I, I think we should carry it forward and stay consistent.
Yeah. There is a, um, a comment on the trail strategy, so staff recommends that updating the existing trails in the map and leaving the planned trails that have not yet been authorized, because the Observatory Mesa Trails Plan was recently adopted, the map could be updated for that. Um, and we could also add a short statement that says inclusion on this map does not imply formal approval of any, for any individual project. So the staff recommendation from this longer proposal from Mr. Popejoy is, that he made in person, if you recall, is simply to add a diff, to yes, adjust the Observatory Mesa Trails, because they were kind of adopted when we were in process. Triple fun. Anyways, um, and then also to add a little disclaimer to the map associated with the regional trails, not the urban ones.
Boy, I thought we already had voted on this last time, but thumbs up for, or down for staff recommendation?
Okay.
We've got all thumbs up.
Um, and then staff also had a recommendation for the next one from the Open Space Commission of how we would propose the, the disclaimer. So it says, future streets not depicted on maps four dash three and four dash seven will be assigned a bikeway hierarchy classification administratively by the City Engineering Department.
Thumbs up or thumbs down by what city suggested? Thumbs up. All thumbs up.
And then I think we are, we already did this hundred-year floodplain one, I knew there was some repetition in here. Commissioner Shee, she, he had previously at the Citizen Review Session said we should add a statement on the plan clarifying how conflicts between maps and text would be addressed, and staff would recommend that texts override map. So when conflict exists between the text and a map, the text regulates.
So which one are we on now?
Six, sixty-eight.
Fifty, I'm sorry, where?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, I'm sorry, okay. And, and do you have, did you say you had a suggestion for that, or not?
Yeah, I don't know where it went. It was in here. It should be the texts override map. So if there's a conflict between the text and the map, the text would rule.
Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down? We've got six thumbs up and one lost person. So we're on item sixty-eight? Now we got two more.
Not being nutty.
Two more, and then we have others to look at, to decide whether we're going to accept them or not. I'm, I'm actually losing battery power, so, and I didn't, I know, I didn't
Yeah.
my plug.
There are two left, but then we, we were just discussing number sixty-three, so sixty-three, maybe I have the wrong information.
I'm sorry, would, you said you gathered the wrong information?
Uh, that's, I just had someone, I had gotten information from someone, but maybe it's wrong. Someone's checking right now. Let's move on to forty-three. So page eleven dash four cites a dam failure on Lower Lake Mary, but the word dam should actually be earthen berm. So we confirmed with emergency management and stormwater, that's correct, so we should make that correction on eleven dash four.
All in favor, thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And let's skip sixty-three while somebody does a fact check on that one. So it's nine twenty-three. I think the question is, do, are there a lot of things that we want to bring over from the other public comments? We've gone through a lot of things. So is it a handful of things? Is it's like fifty things we want to bring forward? Because that would be the difference between scheduling the special meeting for next week or not, and I should let you know I cannot be at that meeting in person because I'll be in Texas. So.
And is that when we were looking at an alternative date for next week that we were asked?
We, we will have to talk about that, but first, I think, first, I think, once we finish this last item, number sixty-three, which Michelle just went and checked on something.
And then we'll page down and see if we want.
Yeah, then we'll need to say how much of the other page do we actually want to go over, and then we may have to schedule the special third meeting.
Or we can consider some of them tonight.
Yes, depends how long you want to stay awake. Um, so for sixty-three, Michelle just checked that actually net zero ready is not already required by the building code. Maybe we wrote not, or there, or something, and it got deleted. It's hard to tell. There's a lot of material we've put together pretty fast.
I would just add that it is something as part of the building code update, and as well as partnership with sustainability and looking at the energy code that's being explored as part of this upcoming round of updates, but it is not currently a requirement.
Mary?
Right, yeah, no, I'm trying to find where I, I put that down. It was something on a second. It was I think you had zero, you had zero energy, and it needed, it, zero ener, hold on, zero energy would have, would require offsets, and so it should read, you know, net zero ready or zero energy ready. It shouldn't read zero, zero energy, but I'm trying to find where my note was on that.
So current one reads, update the city's sustainable building resolution, sustainable building residential incentives to further implement net zero energy standards. That's what it says currently. The, the word ready is what was added.
Right, and so net zero, so the only way to get to net zero is having offsets. So you're implying that people would, there would need to be an offset situation. So I was going back to, I think it should be net zero ready.
I can offer clarification. Net zero buildings, and just for everyone's, this is for City of Flagstaff buildings, as well as our incentive program. Net zero buildings are an industry term and an industry standard. They can be achieved without offsets. It involves building enough solar to essentially cover the energy used in the building, but a net zero building is possible. Um, and a fairly standard term defined by the federal government. And we have one in Flagstaff.
Well, yeah, but your solar is your offset.
Sure, but I, I guess I'm saying staff don't see an issue with the term net zero energy standards.
Okay, I'll, I'll agree to disagree. When I was writing marketing materials on EPA, things like this, that was, that was the difference. But if you're, if it's now included in the assumption that, you know, solar panels are part of that, I'm fine, it's only applying to the city buildings, so I, I can leave it as that.
As well as our incentive program, I guess, all options.
So.
Our incentive program.
So do you want to retract it?
Yeah, I think the incentive program needs to, to be clarified. Because, I mean, I worked on homes that were built as zero energy ready, net zero ready. And, you know, ready is not net zero.
Correct.
So.
Two different terms, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So when you're, you're not having the word ready in there, you're assuming that offsets need to be made to get to that point.
That solar will be installed on those buildings.
Doesn't usually happen in these homes that are being built net zero ready. They're ready to accept a solar, solar panels.
That's right.
Um, but nobody's building them with solder, solar panels. That's a huge ask, and it's a huge affordability issue.
So, sure, I think we've got the issue of language here. We've got, there are two different terms. There are net zero buildings, and there are net zero ready buildings. As you said, a net zero ready building means that the building can easily get to solar, or, or sorry, get to net zero with the addition of solar. Net zero are a different things. And in our incentive and in our building resolution means that these are not required of any buildings. They're in our incentive program, in which the developer receives a large amount of density in return for optional incentives. Um, and the sustainability resolution applies to city buildings.
Yes, is there not a differentiation need to be clarified in the incentive program? If you're just going to use net zero in the incentive program, you're, you're expecting somebody to build with solar panels.
That's correct.
Okay, that won't happen.
Are you retracting your statement?
Yeah, they can leave it the way it is, and I can retract.
Thank you. Then we're ready to look at other items?
Right.
To see if we want to consider those, and.
And that'll help us decide if we need the special meeting, or we can get it done tonight.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
So what is the timing? There has to be a special meeting. We couldn't roll this over to October eighth?
No, we could not, because the council has a special meeting scheduled for October ninth, and I could not have a recommendation and a packet ready for them unless you are completely done by next Wednesday. And we have, we have found out that this room is available Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday night. But you guys would need to help us work on clearing schedules and getting that, we'd have to continue this meeting to that date certain. So we'd have to decide tonight what the date certain is.
Okay.
So there are almost two hundred additional items that are provided, but what I will tell you is many of them are repetitive. I think we went over, some of them are ready. I would just say, which ones stand out to you as ones that deserve your time? Because that's really what you are giving up at this point.
So I, I will say, I circled thirty that I would have been interested in talking about, that I thought deserved discussion, or at least bringing it up and say, do we even want to talk about this? Am I, I don't know, I don't know that I'm ready to talk about those thirty tonight. I mean, I could talk about them. Am I, do I have the capacity to talk about them tonight? Maybe not. So I would rather do another meeting.
And after our discussion, you still think all thirty are? Like, I guess, if you looked back at them, would you want to winnow that down?
I'd have to go back and read them, read them through again. So a lot of them were from Russell Randall. And FBO, which we may have already have talked about in the course of our other discussions. So it was two from SOT best that I wanted to bring forward. Probably the other ones from Jed Blue and Mike Popejoy, we've already discussed, so there'd probably be less than, less than that thirty. So there'd probably be less than, less than that thirty, there'd probably be maybe twenty-five, twenty, maybe twenty.
What are the wishes of the commissioners?
Do they need a motion to go to another meeting?
No, I'm just asking, what are the wishes at this point? Do you want to continue tonight? Do you want to, no, we have people shaking their heads, they don't want to continue tonight, what about the rest of you? My only availability next week is Monday night, that's it. I have visitors on the next day, and then the next night is, you know.
Monday works for me.
So that's my only day that I'm available.
I'm available.
Monday works for me.
Other people? Monday?
Monday's fine.
Josh, Monday's not fine?
Does not work for me, I'll be traveling, but I, I'm okay with you guys proceeding without.
Thanks. Megan? Monday, okay, then we.
So you, so the motion you'll make is, and let's talk about one other thing before you make it, is you'll make a motion to continue the meeting to, let me make sure I got the date right, Monday, April, I'm sorry, Monday, September twenty-ninth, and my only request is that you make it four thirty, so that I can finish the conference I'm attending, and then get over to my hotel so I can log in. Then, um, the other thing is, I'd really appreciate if we could get that list sent individually, not to the whole commission, but to staff in advance, so that we can move things over and just get going.
Which staff member?
Um, should be probably me and Alex are who it should go to, right? Yeah, me and Alex. So do not, do not, hear me the words, do not email the other commissioners or the comment email. Email me and Alex, I will forward those to Elsa, Elsa will get them moved over, so it's all queued up and ready to go. So you can identify those, if, if Lauren, if you'd pull the, the tab up on the screen really quick, you can identify those by line number. So they don't have like a number in column A, but you should be able to see like the one through one hundred and ninety-four number. So just send us a list, I want the following lines moved over.
Can you resend that list out separately, so it's alone?
Sure, we will send it out as an Excel file one more time.
Okay, and then, um, I have a question, is that, is that, is that enough time to, is this an open meeting, and is it enough time to post that?
Yes, we could, we would have to post it by Sunday night. So, yeah, more than enough time, but we will post it Friday.
Okay, thank you.
That won't be a hard, we're just gonna, we're not gonna make any changes to your packet, we're just gonna roll it over.
Right, I just, I didn't know if it was enough time to make that.
Yeah, and that's enough time to make the council packet go to, because I will be able to pull it together, and it'll be prepped on Friday with everything except your recommendation list. Um, I won't be able, what this will mean is I, we won't be able to create alternative, like cross-through pages for council. That time's lost now.
Okay, so, I need a motion to,
I move to forward this meeting?
Continue.
Continue this meeting to Monday, September twenty-ninth at four thirty PM in the city council chamber.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, do I need to ask if there's any miscellaneous items to and from? Doesn't sound like it. Our meeting is adjourned, it's nine thirty-six PM.